All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the Malden School Committee meeting to order. Today is Monday, February 6, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, March 6th, here in the Council Chamber. So what we will do is what we typically do, which is first pledge allegiance to our flag. We'll then have a moment of silence for all those who have honored serving our country. And then we will have our clerk call the roll to ensure that we have a sufficient quorum here this evening, which allows us to conduct business. Then we will get into this evening's agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes, public comment. We'll hear from our superintendent on what's going on in the district. We will then go to subcommittee reports and discussions, where we'll take up a matter from Ms. Batafora under policy and procedures. And we'll hear from Mr. McCarthy regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Then there are three motions that we are going to discuss. Again, one is the superintendent's evaluation. Donation from Genitatio Family Fund. Mr. Welldie will speak to that. And then we have Mr. Bernard, who will talk about a resolution to make lunch and breakfast meals free permanently for students. And there'll be a moment of personal privilege, where members will give updates as to what's going on in their respective wards. Then we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for four reasons. The first is to approve the executive session minutes of January 9th. The next one is to discuss negotiations with SEIU Local 888, the clerical unit. Then we will take up negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the assistant business manager, financial analysts. And then finally, we will take up negotiations regarding the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. We may come back out and act on some of those matters in executive session. Regardless of what we do, we will then move adjournment after that happens. So if there are no questions, I would ask everyone to please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so today. Thank you.
We'll now have our clerk call the roll.
Mayor Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Drummond?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Batafora?
Here.
Ms. Macklin?
Here.
Mr. Welldie?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Ms. Roseibert?
Here.
Superintendent Noriega Murphy?
Here.
Student Representative Haukwe?
All right, so we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to meet. Before we get into the agenda, just one note. We are not live on Zoom this evening. As most of you know, we had an incursion that happened last week here at City Hall and a couple of other municipal buildings. So we are slowly rebuilding and coming back, but we're not quite ready to host Zoom live. So this is being filmed by OMA, and they'll be replaying it as they normally do after tonight's meeting is over. So with that being said, we have the minutes from January 9th. Regular session minutes of January 9th. Motion made by Ms. Batafora to approve, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any questions on those? Everybody's had a chance to review them. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Okay, special for this meeting. We're honored to have our legislative delegation appear before us to talk about the Student Opportunity Act, the Chapter 70 school funding formula, and everything else that's going on in education at the state level. So in attendance this evening, we have State Representative Steve Altrino. We have State Representative Paul Donato. And now, who is going to come before us, is State Senator Jason Lewis, to lead tonight's discussion about the Student Opportunity Act and Chapter 70. So I would ask all the members to please hold your questions until the presentation is over, and then we will go from there. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to all the members of the school committee. It's a pleasure and an honor to be with you. Thank you to all of you for your leadership and your public service on behalf of Malden's students and educators and families. And I want to thank my colleagues, Representative Altrino and Representative Donato, for being here tonight. And also regrets from Representative Lipic Garabedian, who also was hoping to be with us, but had another engagement this evening. So we've, a number of us have been having conversations, really for at least a year, in some cases longer than that, around how school funding works in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and how that impacts funding from the state for Malden Public Schools. And specifically, the Student Opportunity Act, which many of you are aware was a major update to the school funding law and passed and was signed into law in 2019, what impact that has had, and kind of where we sort of go from here. With the objective, of course, of trying to maximize, you know, the amount of state funding that we're able to bring into Malden to support high-quality public education in the city for all of our students. So I'm not sure who's, oh, thank you very much to Mr. Welldie. So the, and you can see this presentation as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I believe all the school committee members have the slides as well. And if you also, in terms of further follow-up information, if you have additional questions or other materials that would be helpful to you, just don't hesitate to reach out, and we'll be sure to provide those to you. So I'll run through this presentation. I think there's about a dozen slides. Some of this stuff gets quite technical, so I'll do my best to just kind of explain it as clearly as I can. Apologies if some of it's confusing. And I certainly would welcome, you know, questions you might have following up tonight or even, you know, after tonight, if you want to follow up and speak in more depth. I should say, by way of introduction, that my interest and knowledge in this topic of basically how we fund public education, how do we ensure adequate resources for all of our public schools and students, was actually the issue that got me to run for the state legislature in the first place. When my own children were in public schools and I saw the impacts of budget cuts back in the early 2000s and how devastating that was, got me, I was, actually didn't have a public sector background. I have an MBA degree, as some of you know. I worked in the private sector. But that was the issue that got me to start volunteering in the schools, got me to serve on the finance committee in the town I live in, and ultimately actually led me to run for the state legislature. So it was very, it was kind of, say, the highlight. I hope I can still do some good things in the legislature, but it was certainly one of the highlights of my time in the legislature was helping lead the passage of the Student Opportunity Act as the Senate Chair of the Education Committee, because that really was the first major effort to update the funding formula since 1993. So what we're talking about tonight is often known as the Chapter 70 formula that refers to the section of Mass. General Law, where this is enumerated. And it was basically put in place, in terms of the way it works today, back in 1993. And that was known as the Education Reform Act. That was, it was a major, major piece of legislation that put in place a lot of the pieces of public education that we have today, including how our funding formula works. By the way, side note, kind of sad news. The senator, who was my predecessor in leading the Education Committee and then became Senate President, Tom Birmingham, actually just passed away just a few weeks ago. So the way that the formula works, it's basically three main steps, as you can see. The first step is essentially to calculate what's known as the foundation budget. And basically, this is for every single school district. This is essentially a spreadsheet that has the same calculations for all school districts that is intended to determine how much money each school district needs in order to provide a high-quality education to its students. So of course, it takes into account things like the number of students served by the district, the, how many of those students are elementary versus middle versus high school, demographic characteristics like English learners, percentage of low-income students, and various factors like that. So that's, that calculation is done on an annual basis. This is done by DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, again, as directed by this formula. The second step, then, in the formula is to calculate what's known as the local contribution, which is how much each city or town is expected to contribute to its school budget from its own resources. And this is calculated based upon essentially what is considered an ability to pay for that community. It takes into account income levels in that city or town, and also property values or aggregate wealth in that community. So that's kind of the second step. And then the third step is essentially that the state then provides Chapter 70 aid each year on an annual basis, which makes up the difference. So if the foundation budget is here and the expected contribution from the city of Malden is here, then that difference is what the state then is required to, expected and required to provide annually in Chapter 70. Nothing stops a city or town from appropriating more money from its own local resources, obviously mostly property tax revenue, but it could be other sources of revenue, for its public schools. So a city or town can always spend more money on its public schools than that foundation budget. But that foundation budget is the floor, okay? Can't go below that amount. So that's basically a simple summary of how it works. Again, you can actually see these numbers for Malden and for every district. There are a series of spreadsheets, and I think I sent them to you all in advance of this meeting. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them. But those calculations are publicly available. Anybody can look at them and see exactly how the calculations are made each year for Malden, for Medford, for Everett, for every other community. The governor comes out with her budget. This year, it's slightly later, because we have a new governor. So that, she'll come out with her budget March 1st. That's the first time we will see what the expected numbers are for the next fiscal year, which starts July 1st. After that, the House will debate the budget in April, the Senate in May, and we'll have a final budget in June, which would set the numbers for all communities, including Malden. So that's how, overall, how it works. Now, in terms of what the Student Opportunity Act did, the Student Opportunity Act was about 10 years in the making and essentially focused on updating foundation budgets. So that first part of the formula, step one, is really what the SOA was designed to do. It didn't really address the second part, which is that local contribution. But I'll get into that more in a moment. So just as a reminder of what the Student Opportunity Act, or SOA, passed by the legislature in 2019, signed into law by Governor Baker, did. First of all, it revised the way that those calculations of the foundation budget are made in order to more accurately and fairly reflect what it takes to educate, to provide a high-quality education for all students. So one of the, number of those areas included employee and retiree healthcare costs, because before, the formula was underestimating the cost in healthcare that our, that our communities were having to bear. Special education was another focus for the update, to again, more accurately affect special education costs. And again, we continue to see, you know, significant increases, I know, in special education costs, you know, through the pandemic and, and, you know, beyond the pandemic. English learners, mental health services, and then, and then the most significant focus of the SOA was low-income students. Basically, reworking the formula in terms of how much additional money is provided for every low-income student that a community serves. And it also makes our funding formula the most progressive in the nation, because the amount of funding provided for each low-income student is not a fixed amount. It goes up with the concentration of poverty in any given community. So the more that there's concentrated poverty in a particular city or town, the greater the amount per low-income student that the community receives. This recognizes the fact that if you're a fairly wealthy community or a middle-income community and you have a few low-income students, you probably have the resources and the wherewithal, you know, to help support the learning needs of those students. Maybe they need more wraparound services and other things. But if you're a community where 50, 60, 70% plus of your students are low-income and are dealing with food security issues, health issues, other challenges that those, that those students and their families are facing, those school districts need, you know, a lot more resources to be able to, you know, really serve the needs of those students and make sure they can succeed in school. So that work on updating that part of the formula, including how we actually count the number of low-income students, was a very important part of the process. The SOA also provided additional state funding in a few other areas. Fully funding charter tuition reimbursements, which is important to Malden, of course, because there are a lot of students from Malden that attend Mystic Valley and some other charter schools. Also included transportation costs in the special education circuit breaker. So when students leave the district to attend, like, for example, a Chapter 766 special education school, the state does pay for 75% of the tuition costs. But up until the SOA, we did not reimburse the transportation costs. That is now included as well. And this current, the fiscal year coming up, that will be fully phased in. So Malden will get the full reimbursement for tuition and transportation for the circuit breaker. We also did something to also increase the capacity of the MSBA. So if we go to the next slide, there were also some policy changes as part of this bill. School districts are required to develop and publicly share their Student Opportunity Act plans for how they're going to spend the money, how they're going to address disparities in outcomes for different student groups. And those have to be updated periodically. There's a special innovation fund that, you know, that we've been funding that allows DESI to make grants for certain, certain things. There's some, a greater focus on data to support data efforts at the district level and at the state level. And then there were a number of policy areas that the legislature recognized need further work that the Student Opportunity Act didn't really fully address. Some of those are relevant to Malden, some are not. The first one has to do with rural schools, not relevant to Malden. But I can assure you, in my role leading the Education Committee, there's a lot of concerns about what's happening to some of our rural schools and regional schools in the state. Recovery high schools. I'm sure we do have a few students from Malden. Don't know how many that attend a recovery high school. That's an area we also need to do more work on to support those needs. School building program is another area that we know we need to do further, some further work. And that was, there was some, the SOA directed some further analysis. But the one that's most relevant to the conversation tonight is the last bullet on the slide, that we directed DESI and the Department of Revenue, DOR, to analyze and come back to us with recommendations for potential changes to the local contribution side of the formula, which is that second, when on the very first slide, the middle. And so we recognized that there were some problems with that, how that calculation is made. But there was no consensus at that time as to changes we would make. So this was at least an initial step to go down that road, okay? So overall, the impact of the SOA, just again, as a reminder, it's expected that it will increase state funding for public schools by one and a half, almost one and a half billion dollars. And that's over what we would be doing just because of inflation. To put that in perspective, the total spending within the Chapter 70 account is about roughly $5 billion. And that's the second-largest part of the state budget. Only mass health is bigger in the state budget than the Chapter 70 program. So it's a, you know, very significant increase in that, in the amount that the state is committing to provide for public, our public schools. Because we're increasing foundation budgets and local contributions are part of what, you know, local, as you know, in step two of the formula, also contributes, it is expected to increase required local contributions out of local resources by approximately $900 million annually. Again, once it's fully phased in. It's being phased in over a six-year period. However, most cities and towns do already fund their school budgets at a level higher than their required local contribution. And this is, this has been true historically for Malden as well, although not as, as much more as some communities. So when you account for that, the actual increase in local spending that this bill will, we anticipate would require is about $90 million annually statewide, statewide, once it's fully implemented. Malden is one of the communities that is expected to have to contribute more than it would otherwise be contributing, again, from local resources, municipal resources that might otherwise go to public safety or senior services or other services that would, the city would need to provide to its public schools. But again, if you look at the difference, it is a lot smaller in terms of what the bill's impact is on increasing local contributions to public schools versus what the expected increase in state contribution is to public schools. It's the $1.4 billion versus the $90 million. So the current fiscal year we're in right now is the second year of implementing the Student Opportunity Act. And we do expect, we're on track to fully implement it by FY '27. So we will, again, when Governor Healy comes out with her budget March 1st, we will then see the numbers for the fiscal year '24, which will be the third year. And those, you know, may evolve a little bit as we go, continue through the budget process, but probably not a lot. All right, so if we go to the next slide, so what has been the impact and the benefit to Malden specifically from the Student Opportunity Act? The Student Opportunity Act has certainly increased fairly significantly, Chapter 70 aid for Malden. The foundation budget increased by almost 8%, $7.6 million, and for this fiscal year. And that was despite an enrollment decline. So Malden actually had an enrollment decline, as you're aware, of 118 students. So that usually has a very big impact on the foundation budget, because it's very sensitive to enrollment. But despite that decline, because of the other changes, particularly around how we're accounting for low-income students, that drove up Malden's foundation budget by a pretty significant amount. And you're going to see that again when we hit the, when we come, when the governor comes out with the FY '24 budget. Malden's enrollment actually will not have declined this time. We're anticipating it to have gone up. So you, we're expecting to see a big increase in the foundation budget. That increase in the foundation budget resulted in an increase of $2.7 million, which is 5.2% for Chapter 70, for this fiscal year. And that is, so the total amount of Chapter 70 Malden is receiving is $54.1 million. So Malden's Chapter 70 from the state is $54.1 million this year. Again, an increase of $2.7 million. That was the largest increase in Chapter 70, both the dollar amount and as a percentage, increased since FY '13. So it's the largest increase in the last decade. And that's this fiscal year, as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. So that's good news. And we do, again, I'm expecting, we'll see the numbers in a few weeks, but I'm expecting probably even larger increase in Chapter 70 in the fiscal year that will be starting July 1st, okay? But we will know that amount on March 1st, at least the first pass at that. The next benefit of the SOA was that the more accurate calculation of the low-income student population, this is a very big deal for Malden, because of course, the city does have a large student, low-income student population. So you can see in FY '23, the count was 4,420 students that met the definition of up to 185% of the federal poverty level. That's the definition in the Student Opportunity Act. And that's compared to 3,447, which was 43% of the population in FY '17. So we were really, I would argue, undercounting the number of low-income students. And this wasn't just affecting Malden. This was affecting a lot of communities, particularly gateway cities, prior to these changes. So more accurately calculating. And that, again, translates directly into an impact on the foundation budget in Chapter 70. Special education circuit breaker reimbursements. We, I think the numbers are roughly around $1.3 million. Maybe, I may be slightly off there, but that's additional dollars to Malden because of the fact that the state is reimbursing for transportation costs and not just tuition costs. And then there's some benefit also for increasing the charter tuition reimbursement. So those are all the ways that the city has benefited. Let's move to the next slide. I think this just shows, again, sort of the same numbers, but just in one chart. So again, for, from FY '22 to the current fiscal year, you can see there was an enrollment decline of 118 students. But despite that, the foundation budget increased by a very healthy percent, almost 8%, which drove the Chapter 70 up by 5%. That's that $2.7 million number. It also drove up the required local contribution. And that's the number, that's the $51 million number, or $3.6 million increase. So, and that's what I'm going to focus the rest of the conversation on tonight. But basically, what's happening is the Chapter 70 formula is both increasing state aid for Malden, which is a good thing, we want that, and at the same time, it's also driving up the required local contribution. That is, again, the piece, the amount of funding that the city needs to provide from its own resources to its public schools. So by driving up the RLC, that does have the impact of dampening somewhat the increase in state aid. Because remember, the formula, you calculate what the required local contribution is. If that's going up, then that is going to have some dampening effect on the increase in state aid. And it also does, of course, put more pressure on the city's budget, because it requires the city to use more of its resources for its schools. All right, so let's focus now on that issue. So before we go any further, I do have to define some terms. And I don't know if you had a chance to look at this in advance. I'm not going to, like, read through all of these, but these are sort of some of the key terms related to local contribution that the formula uses, that as we talk about some potential solutions, you just need to have a basic understanding of these. So I won't go through them all now, but again, I think you have them, you know, in the pack that was sent to you. And again, if you have further questions on what these mean or how they work, certainly feel free to ask me tonight, but I'm also happy to follow up with anybody individually. The next slide, just continues some more of these terms. So if we go to the next slide. So basically, these are some further terms. The one, I just want to focus on, the very last one, because one of the solution, potential solutions that we think would be helpful to Malden, that we are trying to pursue, relates to this idea of below-effort increment. And that's a thing in the formula for communities that are below where the formula thinks that they should be in terms of the contribution that the community should be making towards its schools. its schools. The formula essentially has a mechanism to push that community each year closer. What, where one of the solutions we're, we're proposing and pursuing is to pause that, which would have a positive impact for Malden and, and some other communities that would, many others, actually, that would benefit as well. All right? So let's go to the next slide. So to be more specific about the problem that we're trying to address, and again, that, and, and this problem specifically impacts Malden, but again, Malden's not unique, there's a number of other communities that are being impacted by this. The problem is that the local contribution side of the Chapter 70 formula is unfairly calculating the ability to pay for municipal, some municipalities that are not subject to the eighty-two point five percent cap. And there's some reasons for, for that, which are outlined on this slide. There's an overall, overall, the state commits to providing forty-one percent of the total, if you take the foundation budget for each school district and you add them all up, that total statewide amount, the, the state commits to provide forty-one percent of that and expects cities and towns to provide fifty-nine percent of that. That number is written in to, the, into the statute every year. So, and I'll come back to that in a minute because I actually have a bill to change that. But that, because of that, and in, the fact that the Student Opportunity Act is pushing foundation budgets up a lot more than was true before, which is neat, necessary because it reflects what schools really need to educate, provide a quality education, it's, more and more communities are becoming subject to the eighty-two point five percent cap, which basically means that no community has to contribute more than eighty-two point five percent of its foundation budget. Or said the other way around, every community gets at least seventeen and a half percent of its foundation budget in state aid. This ensures, ensures that every community gets something from the state, and that was a, that was a reform that was put in the formula back in 2008. But because the number of communities subject to that has grown a lot over the last ten years, the result of this is that it is driving up the, the local contributions for communities like Malden that are not capped faster than, I think we would reasonably argue, is, you know, based on the community's actual wealth, based on the property values in that community, based on the income levels in that community. So in, in, in other words, the formula is inflating or overstating what the capacity is for communities. This is felt so, by certain communities, obviously, communities that are not subject to the cap, so you have to be, you know, not a capped community, also communities that are not getting very large increases in Chapter 70. So if you're a community, like Chelsea would be an example, or Lynn, or Holyoke, or Brockton, that are getting very large increases in Chapter 70, yes, it's true that their required local contributions are being pushed up as well, but that's sort of dwarfed by the amount of increase in Chapter 70 they're seeing. So that's why this is felt more acutely by a city like Malden. So the next slide basically lays out a closer look at this for the city of Malden. So you can see that there's two years on the slide here, fiscal year 18, five years ago, and then fiscal year 23. So basically, five years ago, what the formula said was what Malden should be able to contribute as a share of its foundation budget from its own resources, okay, was forty-eight point two percent. That's the number in the, the right, bottom right corner of the slide. What Malden was actually required to contribute that year was forty-four point five percent. That's because the, the formula doesn't expect a community to, to go, to immediately be pushed up to its target. There's some, there's some, there's some things in there to basically protect against a very rapid rise in required local contribution. So that's why the target will often be higher than the required. So the target was forty-eight percent, what Malden was actually required was forty-four point five. So the, said another way, that in fiscal year 18, the state was required to provide fifty-five and a half percent, right, of the foundation budget for the Malden schools, right? So the state's share would have been fifty-five and a half percent, if I did the math correctly. Now, fast forward to FY23, so remember, the, the foundation budget has been going up a lot, okay, because of the Student Opportunity Act. The, the formula is now calculating that Malden should be able to contribute fifty-seven point nine percent from its own resources to its schools. So this is, again, based on a calculation which is equally weighted between property values and total income, aggregate income. When you add those two up, the formula is determining that Malden has the capacity to pay fifty-seven point nine percent. So that's a very big jump over five years, that's a ten percent increase. That's exactly the problem that we're talking about, that the formula is basically overstating, I think we would say, we would certainly argue, what the city's capable of contributing. As a result of that, just back one second, the required local contribution, again, is not going all the way to fifty-eight because the formula is, 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 is doing that, is not forcing the community all the way, but it has forced it up from, you know, forty-four and a half to forty-eight and a half, so about four percentage points that, that the city is being forced to contribute more to its public schools. So it's not as great as what the target is, but it still is having, you know, a substantial financial impact and burden, you know, on the city. All right? So that's what it looks like. So in terms of trying to address this, you know, I, I, I don't want to be like a Debbie Downer here, but I do have to be honest, you know, we, we need to all be honest with ourselves in terms of what the challenges are we face. There are several. There, first of all, there's not a lot of appetite within the, the state legislature to revisit the school funding formula because of the fact that we worked on this for ten years and finally passed the Student Opportunity Act. So that's, you know, something we do have to convince, you know, the delegation has to convince our colleagues, we need to convince various stakeholder groups that, you know, this is something we should be, we should be tackling. Also, many solutions would involve the state providing more money over and above what the Student Opportunity Act is providing. That's a challenge as well because there's already very, very significant additional spending that the state is putting to our schools, which I've shared with you, and also there's substantial amount of federal COVID relief money that was also provided to schools. So that is one of the challenges we face in, 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 in talking, you know, with fellow legislators and with, and with the staff in the governor's office on this. There is a politically sensitive issue here related to Chapter 78 that does go to wealthier communities because, again, I, as I said, every community gets that guaranteed minimum of at least seventeen and a half percent, and I, and I, you know, I'm, I'm someone who thinks that that should be reformed, and, but again, it's a politically sensitive issue. And then the fir, final challenge we have is that I'm going to share with you in a minute a variety of potential solutions, but there isn't any consensus yet in terms of which way we should go, and that is something I'm committed to continuing to work on to try to achieve that consensus. All right? So we're, we're near the end now, so bear with me. So the next two slides basically are some ideas, some potential solutions that we have This is, a lot of this is from conversations that we've been having with the city and, and with other stakeholder groups over the last year or so. So it's been a lot of conversations, a lot of analysis. But the first one is the one I mentioned that relates to that, how much the state overall should be contributing and how much cities and towns. And I do have a bill which I refiled a few weeks ago that would, would change that split so that the state would be contributing a high, a higher percentage, and therefore cities and towns would contribute a somewhat lower percentage, it would gradually phase that, that, would phase that in. So that would be helpful, but that would require a significant increase in state funding be, even beyond what the SOA is providing. We could try to target this with just a separate pothole account, there's the municipal revenue growth factor, which is a piece of the formula that impacts this, we could try to revise that, go to the next slide. Number four, which is the area that we think has the most promise, I mentioned this before, the section of the formula that we could try to essentially pause it, if, maybe not remove it entirely, but at least pause that. And there's number five, which is the one that, again, would make changes to that cap, that, again, I think we should be pursuing reforms there, but that is, that is politically challenging. Or there's just other changes that we could, we could come up with as well, that mean, some of you have talked to me about, and, you know, how we calculate enrollment, for example, some other things like that. And you can see the slide has some pros and cons for each of these, which I won't go further into now, but you can, you can all read that. So where we are, what we've done, so basically, for at least the last year and a year and a half, my team and the members of our delegation, you know, have been talking about this, we've spent a lot of time specifically, particularly with Ron Hogan and Tony Murts, I know Tony's here, I think, back there. Thank you, Tony. And I don't know if Ron's with us, but Ron spent a lot of time on this as well, so I really appreciate all of their time and input, and other, other members, you know, the mayor's staff and, and the superintendent's staff, we've obviously talked to the superintendent several times, thank you. And we've also consulted with folks at DESI and DOR and, you know, the Superintendents' Association, School Committees Association, others, basically to really dig into this. What you're seeing tonight is sort of the, you know, the product of a lot of that, those conversations. Back in November, we had a very productive meeting with the mayor, and the mayor's been a, you know, a real leader on this as well in terms of looking for ways to, you know, solutions. And that, we identified the opportunity to partner with the city of Salem, they have some related, similar concerns, and also have been looking for some new additional reforms, so we thought that would make, make a lot of sense. So in December, we met with then Salem mayor, now Lieutenant Governor, Kim Driscoll. The mayor, Christensen, was with us, my colleague Senator Joan Lovely, who represents Salem, joined us, the members of our delegation, we're all part of that meeting, and we discussed, we basically went through a similar presentation. So kind of what's the problem, how do we propose to address it? We got now Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, I think committed to working with us on this. She said she would talk with when she was in office, she would talk to the leadership of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Commissioner Riley, and the board about these issues, and really impressed upon them how important it was for them to work with us, because in order to really do this work, you need DESI to be actively involved. I mean, they are the ones who manage the formula, they can, they have, you know, they have the expertise over the formula and the spreadsheets that we need, would need to, you know, to, to examine these changes and, and implement them. So last month, in the bill, in the bill filing deadline, I, as I mentioned, I filed some legislation or refiled it related to the foundation budget, and the next steps coming up would be when Governor Healy releases her budget in March, March 1st, and then the House and Senate debate. So again, what we're, what we're, I think, going to try to focus on for this budget cycle, you know, is this idea of could we pause the implementation of the below effort? I think that the estimate we've come up with for the impact that would have on Malden is roughly another million dollars in Chapter 78, you know, over and above what the city would be receiving anyway. Again, we won't know that exact number till we see the calculations that will be in the governor's budget, which DESI will do. But, you know, it's not insignificant, the impact that would have. Again, I'm very hopeful that even without that, the city's going to see a very, you know, a healthy increase in Chapter 70 funding for fiscal year 24, plus the circuit breaker. But again, there is, there will continue to be this pressure, you know, on the, because of that increase in the required local contribution that does, you know, increase the pressure on the municipal budget, which I know is a, is a major strain on the city. All right? So that's basically it on this topic. The very last slide I had was just, because I'm, I, I had this opportunity to be with you and not all together every day, I did want to just, just let you know that there are a, a range of, of issues that I know all of you are well aware of, and you, you wrestle with many of these issues every day, that, where significant legislation has been filed, and if I do serve as the chair of the Education Committee again this session, which we will, we will know very soon, are certainly some of the issues I'm, I'm going to be focused on, and, and I know that Representative Altrino and Donato and Lepa Garabedian are very aware of these issues as well, and will be, you know, will also be working hard on them in, in the House. So school transportation costs, we've had multiple conversations, you know, with, with the superintendent and with, with Tony Murts about this, and this is a major challenge. Special education, school facility construction is an issue, less of an issue for Malden right now, although will be a bigger issue in the future. Educated diversity efforts, I know that's been a goal for you all, to try to increase the diversity, and we want to do things at the state level to help support those efforts. And one, one example of that would be to create alternative pathways for educator licensure to alternatives to the MTL tests, which have been shown to disproportionately hurt applicants of color. Ways to increase access to vocational technical education for, which is a great option for, for, for some students. Universal free school meals, very excited, Malden is already a district that participates in the universal, you know, free school meals program, and I congratulate all of you for going into that program a few years ago. We want to try to do, make that universal and permanent across all school districts. There's a extensive discussion underway about MCAS testing and, and MCAS graduation requirement, and what sorts of changes and reforms are appropriate in that area. I wouldn't say we have a consensus yet around what should happen, but there is an active conversation underway, and I know many of you have thoughts about that, and I welcome your, your feedback. An area that I am very optimistic will make major strides in this legislative session is access to early education and childcare, which includes public pre-K and also out-of-school time care, which is what OST is. I do, I'm very hopeful we will see some major, both funding in the state budget for expanding access to, to early ed, and also legislation that would provide more support for families with greater access to subsidies, more support for early education providers, more support for the early educator workforce, which is, you know, which is underpaid relative to our K through twelve workforce. And part of the solution, I think, will involve what we can do in terms of public pre-K. And I'm excited that Malden is part of the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative, the CPPI, which is fantastic. So I congratulate you on being in that program. That's exactly the kind of program we're looking to expand and scale up dramatically so that more communities can provide high-quality, free preschool, you know, ideally for three and four-year-olds in the community. So I think that's a great goal, and that's part of what we're working to, want to help you with. And finally, I would put on the list, public higher education, because I think that's so important also for so many of our high school students who do want to go on to higher ed, and we've got to do more to make that accessible and affordable for them. And I, I'm very hopeful that because of the passage of the Fair Share Amendment, which is also known, known as the millionaire's tax, because we were successful in passing that, thank you to the voters of Massachusetts, and many of you were leaders in this, we now are going to have more money at the state level to invest in our public colleges, our community colleges, our state colleges, and also to provide more financial aid for students. And I think there's going to be a lot of Malden young people who are going to benefit from that. So I'm sorry to have gone on so long, but hopefully this was helpful.
Very much so, an important topic. And let me just say before we turn it over to the members that second to last slide highlighted the different meetings that have taken place, and that doesn't capture at all. State Senator Jason Lewis, along with State Representative Altrino Donato and Kate Lepa Garabedian, have had many more meetings beyond what you see here. And so, as you mentioned, it's not often we're able to get together in the same room like this, and should be noted to everyone here tonight and everyone watching that you have kept this as a priority, and we want to publicly say thank you for doing that. I've been in public service now for many, many years, and I've seen issues come and go, but education is not one of them, thanks to all of you. So with that being said, let's turn it over to the members to see if they have any specific questions about what they heard this evening. Any specific questions? Mr. Weldy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Lewis. Just a couple, a couple little things, because full transparency, this is something that Senator Lewis and I have talked about a lot offline, and so I appreciate the extensive amount of time that you've spent answering my questions and, and workshopping ideas. One thing I'm curious about, and this actually, I don't think is a, a you question as much as an us question, is in terms of sixty-six percent of our student population qualifying for low income, is that number accurate? Is that correct? Are we still being underreported? Should that be higher?
I think it's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. We, we believe that's, that is fairly accurate now.
Okay. So my second question, this, this is one I actually hadn't thought about before until you were talking tonight, but, and it might be more of a DOR question, but thinking about the municipal revenue growth factor, when the, when the MRGF is calculated, is it calculated in conjunction with the city or town, like, or is this just an estimate of what the DOR thinks the, the growth in local revenue will be? Does it, does it accurately reflect sort of the growth, you know, an exact reflection of the actual growth in local revenue? Or is it more of like, we're estimating what we think that the city or town, you guys might not have the answer to that, I'm, I'm kind of curious, though.
To be honest with you, I don't know exactly how DOR does that, but it's, but it's, it's a, it's a formulaic, you know, so they're, they're going to, they, they, you know, they don't determine this, you know, by going into each community and looking at things separately. They have, you know, certain metrics that they look at, and they base it on, you know, on, on that. That said, I mean, that's one of the areas of discussion is, you know, should there be a different approach that they take because there are, there are concerns that have been raised for some time now that that doesn't, you know, the way, the, the approach they use is not, is not accurate in all, in, in some cases.
Yeah, honestly, I was just curious. I mean, because when you look at it, there are a lot of factors here, and, and I would be curious to find out, and maybe I should check with Mr. Hogan too, whether or not, when that is calculated, if it's actually verified with a city and town, so that we can say, well, we, we think this is what your growth will be, and can, do we have the opportunity to say, no, 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 in fact, this is what our growth was, and so could we potentially be over-expected by the state to?
It's possible, and I don't believe there is a process where they would actually review that with local municipal finance officials. I mean, that, basically, they, DESI just asks DOR each year, you know, give us those numbers for each community, and that gets plugged in, you know, when DESI is running these calculations. So there really isn't that kind of a process. Maybe there should be, but they, they don't currently.
Going to add it to the possible solutions.
Yeah, and if I could add, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Hogan has done a lot of work with this, including having meetings with the Department of Revenue themselves, and has found that the, the data is accurate. All they're doing is plugging in what, yeah, what is prescribed. And therein lies the conundrum, though, because they're using data from formulas that were devised decades ago, and that's what Ron and Tony and others have said, that the items that they used decades ago are no longer what should be used today. So I don't think there's any debate about the numbers that DOR is producing, it's just a question of, of whether or not those are the right numbers in 2023.
To be accurately represented.
Exactly, right.
Yep, no, that makes sense, thank you. Okay, I guess the, the only other, the only other thing I would say is, is as strongly as possible, I'm going to advocate, you know, I have, I was fortunate enough as budget chair to sit in, in the meeting in December with now Lieutenant Governor, and there are definitely Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, and there are communities like Malden and like Salem who are are going through this. And I think for us, I would love to advocate as strongly as possible for us to, and I said this then too, to, to really go ahead as quickly as we can for the pause below effort increment, to really start with solution four, but at the same time, you know, whatever we can do to help you push any of these other solutions, that they, it's not just a one solution, we can push as many things as we can, including your, your bill for, for idea number one, you know, we are happy to help do that. And I appreciate, I appreciate the effort that was put into this, the work that you're doing behind the scenes. It'll be good to see some increased money coming in this year, particularly from things like the special ed out-of-district transportation, the charter reimbursement, and hopefully the effect of the pausing below effort increment in the formula. Yeah, thank you, Senator Lewis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Let's hop over to Mr. Bernard.
Hello, Senator. Just, just a quick thing, because it popped up from the, from the conversation here, and I think it's one of the things that I've, I've seen to looking at, you know, we get, part of where our money comes from is, you know, our enrollment, and typically DESI, I think it comes from DESI, and I might be wrong on that, but it comes from our, what our enrollment is in September, which tends to be lower than what it is come October or November. And I don't know if that's something that you can do anything about, but I'd love to go and see something come about to go and maybe try to go and, and nudge them to look at maybe either average enrollment over the year, or somewhere later in the, later in the, in the, in the school period to, to, to give us more accurate funding, because I think that's one of the things that kind of hits us.
Yes.
Is that September, you know, we've got a lot of kids that come in late, and especially over the last, coming from the pandemic, we had a number of kids that were just not ready, you know, or had families that were not ready to send their kids to school quite yet, and it, it's going to hit our funding. Other than that, I think that is all I've got.
Okay, very good.
I think that, that's a really good point, and you know, for, the, the cutoff date is October 1st, you know, that's when DESI gets all the enrollment data from districts, and then, and then those are the numbers used in the formula. And you know, for many districts, that, that doesn't really change much during the school year, but that is not the case in Malden and, and, and in some other communities where that, it can fluctuate a lot, whether students come in, you know, and then maybe leave again before the end of the year, I know, or they come in and then stay, you know, whatever, but that's, that is, that is true. And we have, I have raised that with, with DESI on several occasions in the past, and when we worked on the SOA, we did look at, you know, some ideas around this, and unfortunately, again, didn't have sort of an agreement on a different methodology. We did look at some other states to see how they do it. Some states average it over multiple years, for example, some things like that. But I agree with you, that needs, that needs to continue to be part of this conversation.
Then, you know, I, I just want to echo Adam's sentiments that, you know, whatever we can do, if it's getting people to go and testify, or, or with experiences they had, or, or going and, and supporting and, and getting information out, you know, we're happy, I'm, I'm happy to do it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Back over to Mr. Welldie.
Real fast, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to very much echo and second what Keith said, because you mentioned enrollment, and we've talked a lot about enrollment and that October 1st date, and I think to Mr. Bernard's point, we see manipulation of that date, particularly here in Malden, right? We know that once the October 1st date hits, that we will get inundated with new students from particularly, let's say, charter schools who can collect the money and then keep and then send the kid to the Malden Public Schools, because we welcome and educate all. And then I think you see a lot of transancy and housing insecurity that you did not used to see before. And I think I've told you the story, and I know that I've talked to Kate and Steve and Paul about, you know, a kid that I had in my district last year that I started the year with in September, and because of housing insecurity, moved over the line to Everett, and then came back to Chelsea, and then had to move over the line to Revere, and back to Chelsea, and all of that bumping around not only affects the kid, but it also affects the formula and the way that things are counted for the districts that the kids are in. So as strongly as possible, I'd love to echo and see if we can add enrollment and how the enrollment is counted to the other, other issues list. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Just from the Chair, Senator, I think the effort proposal followed by the pothole account is the way I think, you know, we would go. So again, you know, I want to thank you and the team, and especially your staffs. Your team has always been there responding to our questions. And just for everybody here in the chamber or watching at home, you might think the required local contribution, when it has gone up a few percentage points from 2018 to now, is not, you know, too big of a deal. But this is one department we're talking about. The City of Malden has roughly 30 to 40 departments, so you have Public Safety, you have Public Works, and the list goes on. And when you're capped each year by property tax going up two and a half percent, yet the required local contribution has gone up roughly 4%, you can see, I think, the challenge that we face, is that there just isn't enough to be able to do all that we want done here in the community. And so that's why we have been working diligently with our delegation to try and address that. So, believe me, we understand that we need to do more on the commercial end, which I think is happening, but it's going to take time. Just behind us, behind you, in front of us, on Exchange Street now, we have Exchange 200, which just had two life science companies move in. There's going to be another office building built at Dartmouth and Pleasant. But the time we realize any, you know, revenues from that will take several years, and I think what we're dealing with right now is, is, has to be addressed in this coming fiscal year and beyond. So that's the, the, you know, the 30-foot-thousand view of what we're dealing with at the local level, is just how to be able to do everything that is asked of us. And again, we wouldn't be where we are, I think, without our state delegation. They have a lot of issues. I, I meet with them quarterly, and the page of things that we talk about is three pages, I think, three or four pages. And so for them to prioritize this, to continue to prioritize this, we just want to say thank you. And please let us know, again, as Mr. Bernard said, how we can help.
Absolutely. Thank you all for, for your leadership and partnership, and I want to echo what the mayor said, also, our, our staff is critical to this. In my case, Sarah Zeiberg is with us tonight, and also my chief of staff, Zach Crowley, who's probably one of the few experts in this entire state on the Chapter 74.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, everyone, so let's go back to the regular agenda. We wanted to take that out of order to allow that important presentation to be made. We'll now go to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the school committee. We only ask that you state your name and address for the record, and keep your remarks to just a couple of minutes. Public comment is now available. Anybody wishing to address the school committee? Again, if you don't this evening, you can always contact us after, okay? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dawn O'Toole. I live at 130 Adams Street in Malden. I am a kindergarten ESP at Bebe, and a parent of a junior at Malden High School, and also a recent graduate from Malden High School. At quite a few school committee meetings this year, the topic of AEAP has been discussed and analyzed in depth, and after listening to the latest presentation at the January 9th meeting, I was inspired to do my own in-depth look at some of the numbers. As of January 5th, there were 110 students enrolled in the AEAP from grades four to eight. During that same time, there were 2,274 other students who were enrolled in the same grade levels. We saw data at the last meeting that did not show a huge difference between AEAP students and non-AEAP students. We saw, in some cases, more non-AEAP students exceeding expectations on evaluations. We have heard parents and students in favor of the program, as well as parents and students who are asking for a better program across all five of our K through eight schools. At a school committee meeting in the fall, Superintendent Noriega Murphy presented this slide, and it is showing reality, equality, equity, and liberation. Right now, the AEAP program is reality. Only a few spaces at one school for a few students. By eliminating AEAP and creating and implementing a middle school honors program at all of our K through eight schools, we will be creating equity and taking a step closer to liberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now. I just ask that you state your name and address for the record. Please, come right up.
My name is Hei Mu'Gari, and you might remember me from the past meetings, and I am here to raise the topic of the AEP program, which has been debated, whether we should leave this program, or whether or not we shouldn't. In my opinion, it's really beneficial. Have you taken a look at all of the smiles the students in the program have when they walk over to the school and get into their classrooms? They learn so many new things, and this program really should be appreciated, has so many benefits to us students. If you take it away, you're taking away a part of our hearts, a joy that we have. I also specifically wrote this poem in honor of this program. Every day, I long to go to school. The AEP program really is beneficial. It's true. I learned many things I may couldn't have learned. My hopes and dreams would have been burned. So please, I beg you, don't get rid of it. To us students, it's like putting on warm mitts. Help us thrive and grow. The AEP program creates tomorrow's amazing Malden leaders today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did not write a poem. Isaac Slavitt, 14 Geleno Street, MPS parent. I ask that you permit me the full three minutes as I rise on behalf of the over 300 signers of last year's petition to preserve the AEP, including in lower grades, and to expand accelerated learning opportunities in our schools. We're eager to hear the results from the working group and the superintendent's final recommendations going forward. Ideally, we could use this public comment time to provide feedback on specific proposals, but they have not been shared with the public. So instead, we can only offer a brief plea to the school committee about the process that we're using to grapple with this issue as a community. It's our understanding that any substantive district policy changes are required by Rule 22.01 and Policy BGB of this body to be posed publicly in writing well in advance of a committee meeting. The stated rationale for the policy is sound, to permit time for study of all policies or amendments to policies, and to provide an opportunity for interested parties to react. These are this body's rules, and they stand in contrast to certain instances over the last year of kind of brand-new presentations, often involving claims about data, followed by snap votes in the same meeting, without the time for interested parties to get into it. I hope you'll agree that this pattern hasn't been serving us well, having led to a couple of public reversals, but more importantly, missed opportunities for a deeper engagement with the public here in Malden, as well as the broader research community around equity in education and acceleration. I think we need to understand that the data that we have about this program is a function of the past policies of this program, and nothing more. Those past policies are owned by this committee in this district, so the buck kind of stops here. If other cities and towns across the Commonwealth can put sensible acceleration policies in place, and so can we, there's nothing special about Malden that makes any of this impossible to implement here. Even if it would be challenging, our MPS educators tell their students every day not to give up on a task just because it's hard. We owe it to students to live up to our mission statement, allowing all students to maximize their potential and meeting their individual needs. So if we have the will, we can fix any policy deficiencies and make needed services available to any student across the district. And actually, just as one thought, the, the sort of reality, equity, liberation picture, the equity one shows customization based on where people are, whether they need help catching up to age-based grade level, or expanding beyond it. As a gateway city in a Title I district with such profound diversity, by any metric, the most inequitable move is not to try. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now?
My name is Keith Page. I live at 32 Concord Street in Malden. I would ask that if there's anything that's going to be decided about the AEP program tonight, that there'd be a period of public review of whatever testimony is, is used as input for that decision, and that a vote be taken at a public meeting like this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the school committee? All right, hearing none, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. We'll now go to the superintendent's report. So the superintendent will present on what's happened across the district since we last met. Superintendent.
Hi, good evening. So we are celebrating this month, the Black History Month, but I have to say that it's not just one month, it's 365 days. So I just want to make sure that every day that we actually here, we celebrate the history in not just one month. Next slide. We have great news in our schools. We have the Poetry at Loud finals for the students who are going to go to the Nationals in March. We also have the candle sale for our students at Malden High School. That was the Mystic Side Candle Art Sale, and I have to say it was an, an amazing event. We are going to have the Junior Priorities. Please support our students. You can, you have the link in there, just for any fundraising. Next year, we are going to go to Costa Rica, a group of students from the high school, they're also looking for support for fundraising. We are going to have at the high school the Bingo Challenge, so support our students in our schools, please. Next page. We had a great opportunity. We were engaged, we were invited by the district attorney, Maria Ryan, to attend the Empowering Girls Conference, and the keynote speaker, as you can see there, it was Valerie Biden Owens, the Sister of the President, so it was a great event. We sent 105 students, and that was grade five to eight. So thank you to the parents who serve as chaperones. We didn't have enough space sometimes in the buses for adults, so they were in cars, but it was amazing. And the lens of the district is that we are looking more at middle school, thinking about fifth grade to eight. Usually, middle school is six to eight, but we know that our students in fifth grade are ready to be challenged too in different discussions and also in the curriculum. I want to thank our school committee, Mr. Gray, right on time, for visiting our schools. He had the goal to go to every single school once a month, so thank you for doing that. We have been visiting schools, my team, we spend almost every single day in different classes, and it was great to see our student representative in a math class. Yay. I have to say, thank you, Mr. Garcia. There are students who wrote beautiful cards for Mr. Garcia, saying, thank you for keeping our students safe, or the building safe. So thank you for doing an amazing job, keeping this good, this school and students safe. They love this school. The same thing with all, all the schools. We had a dance, believe it or not, the ELC, one of the coolest day, it was really, really cold on Friday, they had a dance, so you had to see all these small, tiny students, oh, sorry, it's the other one, sorry, dancing, and of course, we have our amazing principal showing some of her moves. So thank you for the parents who organized this. There's a lot of amazing things happening across these schools. Now we are going to go with the typical agenda, and this is our enrollment, school calendar, comparative data, updates about human resources, the Welcome Center, most, and then we're going to have a presentation about the AEP program. Thank you. Our district enrollment, we are seeing an increase, not what, as much as we want, but it is steady. We have 6,464. We have 6,464 students. As you can see, from January 9, next slide, to now, we have seen an increase on student enrollment. There are waves in our district. We started small, and then suddenly, in March, we see a large increase of newcomers. And we are doing an analysis to see what is the pattern that we see across the district within five years. So we are in that data gathering. February is a very short month, only 11 days that we have at school. February break is going to be February 20 to the 24th, no school. In March, we are going to start the MCAS testing world day, so please bear with us as students are going to start getting assessed. You can see, so we do have a new calendar for next school year that is going to be proposed for you to approve. We have worked very closely with M E A, and we got their approval on the calendar. We are already working on the calendar of year 2024, 2025, just in case people want to plan two years ahead. But right now, this is the calendar that we have. The difference in this calendar would be that the early release will be on Tuesdays instead of Fridays. The reason is why? On Tuesdays, we will be able to get 30 more minutes of professional development. And that is something that we always need because of the new curriculum and also for teachers to have more time to engage in planning. The same, our school is going to start in August the 30th. And as of today, for this current year, our last day of school is scheduled for June 15. Knocking on wood that we will keep a year, we're crossing our fingers that that's the way it's going to stay. Our human resources numbers, as you can see, we are working very closely, the Office of the Human Resources and the M E A, by contacting members saying, "We need to make sure that you have your license, that you have the S E I endorsement." And we are working very hard with Cambridge College and other universities, trying to make sure that all our educators, E S Ps, and teachers who are emergency licensures or need the S E I endorsement, that we give vouchers so they can go and take the test and the training. This number has decreased significantly, and we are going to provide next time comparative data. But you can see that we are working really, really hard to make sure that all our staff will have the license before May or June. Moving forward is the open positions. It's 51 positions. Many people say, "Can you give more teachers to the schools?" And say, "We can do that." The only thing that we still have positions posted is that we don't have applicants. So once again, if you know of anybody who is looking for a job, there are a lot of opportunities on wonderful schools. And we are still hiring. The schools, they do, we have parents by agencies, hired by agencies. We have long-term substitutes, but we are looking for teachers. And we are looking for people that can stay with us for long term. We are looking, we're working with long-term substitutes to see if they can also get the license so they become teachers and stay with us. Next. Welcome Center. We have in the queue only five kindergarten students, and then from grades one to 12, 21 students. That means that the applications is still not completed. We hope that they are going to be completed this week. We do have a waiting list at Baby in grade four, at K, grade four, six, and eight, at Fairway in grades one, four, and six, at Linden in grade six, Salem Wood in grades seven and eight. We accept students, and we look for the second closest school in the neighborhood because we want to make sure students stay very close to the neighborhood schools. Most, I have to thank the staff for most. They have, Genia has done an amazing, amazing job recruiting staff. When we started the year, there was 167 students on, there were 40 students on the waiting, 133 students in our waiting list. Right now, it's 43. So we are still working that if we find staffing, we hire so we can decrease the number of students in the waiting list. So this is the part that many people have been waiting for, and we want to make sure that we are going to use the time to go over this. So I am going to invite three people to come to the podium. That is Assistant Superintendent Emily Spina, Assistant Superintendent Pam McDonnell, and our analyst, data analyst Pam Stasinski. Thank you so much, ladies. All right.
Good evening, everyone. We just want to start by stating a few beliefs that we have in here in Malden Public Schools, especially in the Department of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And that is the importance of ensuring that curriculum alignment across grade levels and subjects, providing opportunities for expansions, interventions, and supports. This is really important to us because we believe that every student should have the same experience and access across the district. So in reading the bullets, Malden Public School believes that all students have the right to a great education in every single school and in every single classroom. Malden Public Schools believes that all students deserve rigorous curriculum and instruction and strong relationships with peers and adults. Malden Public School believes in an inclusive school environment rather than creating exclusionary classroom settings. And Malden Public Schools' focus is on individual student growth. Each student must be making academic and social emotional progress. Here, we've seen this slide before, and this is talking about the curriculum that is implemented in our A E A P program and also across the district. So I just want to pause a second to go over a little bit of the process that went into selecting these curriculums that isn't often mentioned when we just read through the list. And that is to mention that Ed Reports and Curate, which are third-party curriculum review organizations. And these organizations are tasked with ensuring that there's high-quality curricular materials that align to standards. So Ed Reports, for example, hires national educators to rate these curriculums. And this is one of the reports that we used when we were looking at curriculums to adopt here. And then I also want to talk a little bit about Curate, which stands for Curriculum Rating by Teachers. And this is sponsored by DESI. And this is panel of Massachusetts teachers who review and rate evidence on high-quality instructional materials. They publish these findings. And it should be noted that Curate doesn't even look at any curriculum that hasn't already been rated by Ed Reports as meeting expectations. So these were the two main, you know, third-party organizations that we looked at. They also, I also want to mention that for ELA curriculum, they have a criteria where they look at text quality. They look at how the curriculum builds knowledge, and they look at how usable it is, so the usability of it. For math, it looks at focus and coherence. It also looks at rigor in mathematical practice, and again, the usability. So now, before I start reading the curriculums that we have selected here in Malden, I want to say that both Curate and Ed Reports highly rated both of these curriculums and pretty much gave it either perfect or near-perfect scores in these criteria that I just mentioned to you. And so for ELA, we use, for grades four to eight, we've adopted Amplify CKLA. For math, grades four and five, we use Eureka. And for grades six to eight, we use Open Up Resources. For science, grades four to eight, we use department-created science curricular materials. And for history and four to seven, we use TCI, which is History Alive. In grade eight, we use iCivics and department-created history units.
So I'm just going to start with saying, this is, I'm not going to read it to you, but this was the scope of what we were tasked to do as a working group. I want to thank Ms. Rose Zeiberg for being with us on this committee. She's worked, oh, this working group, she's worked really hard. I'd also like to thank Elaine and Katie Steele and Erica, as well as Larissa Doherty, who all worked really hard on this. And we've met quite a few times, if you want to go to the next. I have detailed all of the meetings that we had and what we, what are basically our agenda, who was there. So you can look at that, those are the next two slides. But the meat of this part is what we actually sort of did. The first thing we did was, and Sharon, feel free to jump in anytime. We reviewed the entrance and exit procedures. One of the things that we really liked was that you had to be a current Malden student, that you had to be in Malden schools to apply to the program, not someone who was coming from another school, whether it was a charter or a private school to get into the program. We did find that if any A E A P students leave, that the spots would be filled. We liked that idea as well. Two students met the criteria but had lower scores and were placed on the waitlist due to lack of available seats. So that's the, that was, we did have a waitlist this year that they had used iXL, iReady, Writing Prompts, Standards-Based Science and Social Studies Assessments for entrance. We also noted that a negative recommendation from a teacher did not exclude a student. So if a teacher wrote a negative thing about a child, they were not automatically excluded. We did find that close to over 70% of the applicants were from Linden. I E Ps, EL students and 504s were not exclusionary factors. I do not believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have any students that are on I E Ps, but we do have 504s in the program. Many principals and teachers approached students to apply, but there were no, students were not pre-identified. It was a blind process. All decisions were made on the ranking system. It's a composite ranking. So as long as they were at grade level for all subjects, they were considered. We did find, and one of the things we talked a lot about was the exit procedures. While they are very well laid out, it's unclear how that would work for a child. Say you have a fifth grader who is not making benchmarks. Who's going to call that parent and have them in and move them out? And when are they going to be moved, at the end of the year? So right now, that's something that needs to be clarified. We did spend some time looking at a sample policy from the Harlem School District that does have a similar program. What we liked from that policy was that they had the program in all of their K to eights. They were able to do it by subject, not, it wasn't one, it wasn't all or nothing, so they could do it by subject. It had a very explicit exit criteria. There were different pathways for students to be referred. Right now, it really is only word of mouth if parents know about it, if, you know, they get the email and they read it. And so different pathways to refer students. There weren't the, having it at every school took away the barrier of getting students to Linden. One of the things that we found is that, you know, if you have multiple children, it's very hard to only get one child to Linden. Or if you don't drive, or you don't have reliable transportation, it's hard. So having it just in one school is a barrier, and the Harlem School District took that away. We also looked at, they had a pull-out model, or a walk-to-read model for services in lower grades to be able to service all of their students at all levels. And in a walk-to-read model would be, all of the first grade has reading at the same time, and they split all of the kids up into different groups, and they go to different rooms for their reading according to their levels. We looked at, there was a difference between accelerated moving ahead in the curriculum versus enrichment. We currently have an enrichment model, not an accelerated model. And we really don't believe that all caregivers know about our A E A P program. This was, I don't know if you want to talk about this?
I can talk about it really quickly. So this was the conference that we were asked to, you know, provide to the teachers, because teachers noted that their PD, in terms of what they received on the program, was initially put in place versus what they receive now. It's not the same. So we opened up six seats district-wide and allowed anyone to sign up that wanted to sign up. Five participants signed up. Four were from Linden. One was from the district, and one slot remained open. So there weren't more people that wanted to participate than we were able to fund to participate. And then about a year ago, February 21st of last year, we just called a Zoom meeting to bring all the participants together to ask them about their experience. So these are just some highlights from what the participants said. Of the five that went to the conference, only five, only four participants showed up to share what they felt. Participant one felt that it was the best PD that they had received in over 10 years. Participant two did not feel that they learned as much and felt guilty that the district had spent money and that we would not get our return on the investment. Participant three felt it wasn't as powerful, and there were few nuggets or takeaways that they could bring back. And participant four kind of echoed what participant two and three said and felt that it wasn't as engaging as they hoped that it would be.
We had a lengthy discussion. We had two A E A P teachers join us. And these are just some of the highlights. We asked them what they did differently. They said the pacing was different. They did more hands-on projects, and the students were able to have richer interactions with each other. How are you differentiating instruction? They said that they can accelerate and move at a faster pace. They dive deeper and do more projects. It's more of a project-based learning. We asked how teachers are prepared to teach, and they said the same thing. They used to get more support when it was funded by the Gates Foundation. They no longer do. We asked about are all the students appropriately placed? They said some students, so it was interesting because we had one teacher who is a middle school teacher, and he has one section of A E A P and then other sections. And he said that he has students in his non-A E A P classes that are outpacing some of the kids in that, in the A E P section. And some of the new students, they said this year were a great fit, and some, they questioned why they were there. So it was a mixed bag of, you know, how the kids were in that. Do they have eight, do they meet regularly? And they do not, they do not have common planned time. They do try to meet sometimes, but not regularly, not scheduled. What would be the difference between an ONUS and an A E P program? We discussed this, I believe Emily was with us that day. And so for us, the ONUS program, it would be different because all students will be exposed and have the opportunity to engage in rigorous projects and activities. So and students would have to complete those projects to have the ONUS designation. So this is our assessment and sort of what we came up with. At this point, A E A P, for whatever reason, is not a well-developed program. It is, you know, in need of an overhaul of some sort is what we kind of came to. We would suggest the following: more PD and project-based learning, progress-based learning, clearer exit procedures, and support for students that are struggling. A more robust recruitment process to make sure that it's open to everyone and not just predominantly Linden, if it were to remain there. Entrance procedures that are less of a burden on parents because they had to bring them to take the assessments. And it was a lot for some parents, we heard. Some type of maybe an online application process. And this is the big one, it was multiple pathways to enter the program and not just word of mouth if a parent decides to bring their child to apply. And we did think that the location was probably a barrier to accessing the program between transportation, sibling placement. So we would like to think about having it in multiple locations. Adapt the program to allow students at all schools to access it. Look at a model that allows students to access individual subjects because, as we said, right now, it's an all or nothing. But, you know, you might have someone who's doing really well in math, maybe not so much in English, so that you could have, or vice versa, so that it would be more open to students. Continue to work on developing the program. Need for a program across all grade levels, some type of timeline on rolling out and updated programming. You know, data shows that there are other students above grade level across the district. How can we tap into them and make sure they're also getting what they need? I think that's one thing I heard continuously from Ms. Rose Zeiberg is that all of our students deserve, no matter what school they're sitting at, to be pushed to their potential. And right now, having it only in one building, there's lots of barriers to that. And then, like I said, all of these students should be able to access a robust curriculum at their performance level. And then we did find out that DESI is doing a little work around that, so we could reach out to their liaison and look at other districts that are also working on similar programs. And that is all I have.
So just to review some of the criteria that we put in place last year. So just to review some of the criteria that we put in place last year, end of last year, so that we could start the program with some guidelines. We said that students in the AEP program had to be in it for all the core subjects, so ELA, math, science, and history. That they had to have an attendance of ninety to a hundred percent. Their grades between A minus and A plus, homework completion of ninety percent. They also had to score in all assessments in all subjects at no lower than grade level. For the mid-year and end-of-year reviews, students must score at least at grade level or above in ELA, math, science, and history. For number six, students who scored lower than grade level benchmark in at least one of the such, subjects would be required to exit the program, and then students could not have a disciplinary record.
So where we are now, after listening and actually looking at all the notes from Pam, also with Larissa and Erica having meetings together. Why would happen, some students were grandfathered last year, this year they are not. So therefore, they are, they take, they took the test like everybody else. When they say no clear exit criteria, there is one. And it is when the students are not meeting, the mid-year criteria scores in ELA, math, science, and history, they are going to receive a warning notification about the exit in the program. That notification will be coming from the Welcome Center. That is the one processing all the information. They have the scores, and they are going to start sending information to families. What happens at the end of the year assessments? If the students do not meet the criteria at the end of the school year, caregivers of those students are going to receive an exit in the program notification. And students will, who meet the criteria will remain in the program. The other students will have options, because we understand that it's hard, you already at the school is, to remain at Linden or go to a neighborhood, to go back to the neighborhood schools. So the, when are you going to receive these notifications? So after February vacation, the notifications are going to go to the families for the students that actually are not meeting the criteria. Next steps. If the program remains open, now that we have data and we have developed the system to collect the data, we are going to be the ones sending the invitation to the students that fulfill the criteria of the assessments. That will be in ELA, math, science, and history. The application can be submitted electronically, on paper, and always will be translated in multiple languages. There will be a recommendation letter from an educator and the school principal. Students who are new to the district, there will be something new. They can actually fill out the application, schedule time to take all assessments, and they can have to provide a letter of recommendation, their school records, and from an educator. These are looking at the recommendations that were made on slide page forty-four. The criteria that we also heard about, attendance, the perfect student, is the attendance would be to eighty to a hundred, so that's a change in that. The other change will be, as an in-district program, is that the scores in the assessment will be above grade level. Grade level assessment or scoring at grade level is expected. That is actually what should be happening. Accelerating program means it should be above grade level. We are also going to see disciplinary records. Some students have been suspended, but we know that with support, we are going to look at that and a recommendation from the principal to open it for most students. So we want to make sure that we have, going to implement this plan if the program is going to remain open. This is typical of many other districts, where the district is the ones sending the actual letter saying you are actually eligible to apply for this program. All right, we are going just to revise data from Pam Saniski.
Okay, thank you. As you can see on this slide, this is just an updated list of the number of students that are in.
Could you just move closer to the mic?
Sorry. As you can see on this slide, this is still just enrollment at each grade level of the students in the AEP program. We just updated it with our February numbers, and as you can see, there's been very little change. Next slide. This information is looking at the enrollment of those students, and some of this is familiar to you from the last school committee meeting. The number on top, non-in parentheses, represents the students in the AEP program that meet that criteria. So for example, fourth grade, above grade level, is measured on the iXL math. There are ten students at Linden. There are twenty-five students scattered across the remaining district. And when we go down to the very last piece, you can see above grade level in both math and ELA, the, the numbers drop, because we're looking at students that are above in both ELA and math, as measured by iXL for math and iReady for ELA. Next slide, please. This one is actually projecting out what the numbers might look like for next year, and also including history and science midterm exam assessments. This is with the assumption that everyone in their current grade would be in the, rolling up to the, the next grade. So for example, those in grade three in twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four would be our current third graders. And so I was able to pull the information again off of the iXL for current students, the iReady for the ELA, again, on both. And then we pulled in our history and science. The reason why there are no numbers in grade four is because this was given to students in the current AEP program. And since that program starts in grade four, our current third graders would not have taken that particular assessment, so there's no data for that. The iReady and the iXL test, if you're familiar with those, those are commercially-produced products that are computer-adaptive tests. That means it gives the item, the first item to the child at grade level. So a fourth grader is going to get a fourth grade item. If they get that item correct, they're going to get a slightly harder item. If they get that problem incorrect, they'll get a slightly easier item. That, that system will continue to go back and forth until the system reaches an equilibrium, approximately fifty percent right and fifty percent wrong. That's how it determines at what level that child is functioning. Those systems have thousands and thousands of items in their systems, and so they can give items to a fourth grader at an eighth grade level if they keep getting items correctly. They can give an eighth grader items at a tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade level. The history and the science were paper and pencil-based assessment items developed by the directors in those respective departments at the district level. They pulled assessment items that were well-vetted and from previous exams, but they were approximately twenty to twenty-eight items, if I remember correctly. So identifying what numbers to put in, in here for those was, was a little bit more challenging. They were all grade-level standard items. So there wasn't the ability to have all these above-grade-level items on these assessments. It would make these assessments excessively long. So I used a couple of different methods to identify what I thought might be a, a strong score on either the assessment of history or the assessment of science. So to meet the numbers in there, you could meet it in one of two ways. A student was able to answer at least eighty percent of the items correct, which in a traditional school system would be a B minus. But I also looked at it from a statistical standpoint and calculated the average score for the class, the standard deviation for the class. And if the student's score was at least one standard deviation above the mean, they could be counted in that way. So either way, whether they got an eighty or above, or they were at least one standard deviation or above, would allow them to be counted on these, on these numbers. So for example, if there's a class and no one in the class got above a seventy, there would still be students that would be counted, because we would figure, I would calculate what the standard deviation was for that class and what the mean was. And if they were at least one standard deviation above the mean, even if all the students scored a seventy. And you can have students that have scored only a seventy, maybe the test was, was actually pretty rigorous. And we don't have a way at, at this point of being able to really measure that level of, of difficulty. And so that was a way to help identify students in those categories. So you see history, you see science, then you see the numbers that were meeting one of those two criteria in history and science. And then the very last line on there was the student were counted in those numbers for the iXL math and the iReady ELA as above grade level. They are counted in the numbers of history, and they are counted in the numbers of science. And so you can see in these cases that we actually had no students that fell into those categories.
Thank you, Pam, for the work. So we have two proposals. There's a final proposal for, from the district, but there are two proposals that, in order to run a program, we have to have at least twenty-two students in each classroom. And as of today, you can see the numbers. It would be very challenging. We, as a district, are not, if we keep the program, are not going to be forcing families to move out of their neighborhood schools. We actually have students who are scoring very, very high in other schools, have been there for many, many years. And we do not plan to actually ask families to move their children for one or two years in a school, if they're happy in the neighborhood school. Of course, families always have the choice to move students. This is the proposal that we have after we heard from the working group about the location. So one will be, if we have enough students for the program, we will move the program to a different location, central location, for next year. We do have a plan. If this is going to take place, we will have a rollout plan for this. We need a minimum of twenty-two students for each grade level, because in order to have a program, it has to have students in every single grade level, in every single subject. We cannot have a program that is going to be just offering ELA for one grade and not for another one. We are going to offer it only for fifth to eighth grade. Then all four-subject teachers in a new location, we have to be open to teach this. So that means the principal, when we identify the school, I will let you know the school later, or not today, but we will have to meet with the principal. The principal will have to go and see who within their own staff would love, would love to teach a section of AEP from grades five to eight, because they are self-contained, they are, I'm sorry, they are subject-based instead of self-contained. Then teachers who are identified, who would like to teach this, will participate in the summer program for the CKLA, Eurica Open Up Resources Curriculum Extension Training. Our curriculum has an opportunity for extensions, which is something that we are using in another program. And it's implemented right now. It's being piloted in other schools, and it's going to be fallout, it's going to be given to all the students next year. Talking to the MEA, we do not know if teachers from Linden will go to the other school or not. Teachers are assigned to schools, not to programs, so that would be something that we will have to talk to the MEA if that happens. But that is one of the proposals, move the, move the program to another school, open it only from five to eight. And the same thing for subjects. If we want to have an acceleration program, it should be above grade level too, and not just a grade level. The other proposal is, once again, it's all, all depends if we have students to fill the seats in each grade level. We have seen the preliminary data, which indicates that we don't have enough students to, to fill those seats. Across the district, students are doing a standardized grade-level curriculum. Teachers differentiate and scaffold the content, ensure that students have access to rigorous content. We also are trying to make sure there's a curriculum alignment across the district, something that hasn't happened for many, many years. We do have several district programs. In this, in these schools, AEP is one of them. We have an enter-and-exit criteria and procedures. This program doesn't involve policies. It's another program within the district. According to the slide forty, where it says, currently, we have an enrichment model and not an acceleration model, which is true. We do not have an acceleration program. We do have sort of a model. Grade-level work is expected in every single class, in every single school, at every single grade level. It is the benchmark. We want to make sure that this happens across the district, and it's happening. So I want to thank all the educators in the Malden Public Schools for doing a great job. We want to make sure there's depth and mastery of standards. Faster doesn't mean going deeper. So we want to make sure that if we have an acceleration program, the students can perform above grade level and not just at grade level. That is an expectation. It's not ask more. By slide forty, there was a request to have it by subject. This is something that we totally agree. Students can shine in different subjects. It is actually something that I don't believe, and my team doesn't believe, and all of them are there, that we have to force students to be great in four subjects. That would be great, but it's not a reality. Some students have a deeper understanding of math, and that's what they do well. Why not to give them more of that and support the areas that they need more help? So we do agree that in every single subject, students should be successful, and that is something that we are offering across the district. This is not something new that we are going to do. We are doing it already. Then the other one is, what do teachers do differently in these classrooms? Pacing, project-based student interaction in slide forty. This is something that is happening across the district. We believe in collaboration among students. We believe in critical thinking, project-based learning, absolutely yes, but in inclusive classrooms. Pacing, all the teachers in Malden Public Schools have been spending time with their colleagues, creating the pacing maps, trying to make sure that we are going to reach the students' potential in every single classroom. We believe in expansion for those students who actually need more accelerating learning, absolutely yes. Interventions for the students that find some challenges. And sometimes it's reversed. The students that actually can go through expansions also need interventions. We are dealing and talking about students, human beings, that some days need support and other days can flourish. And that's what we are all here about. We want to make sure that we are going to be aligned with the curriculum that we adopted, that has been recommended by DESI. So we are not going to have a different curriculum in this program. That is alignment for the district, so we can align the assessments. I just want to make sure that we, in the district, are going to make sure students have the same experience across the district. We do believe in having inclusive school environments, and we remove our idea of creating settings where we exclude students. All our students in the Malden Public Schools should be exposed to rigorous curriculum, yes. And we do believe also to focus on the student individual growth. That is the goal that we have, and that is the commitment that my entire team over there and all the educators have in the Malden Public Schools. So the recommendation of the district at this moment is to actually close the program and continue doing what we have been doing, providing all students with regular curriculum, PD for teachers, and trying to make sure that we are going to do the best for all our students in getting deeper mastery of standards. That is the recommendation of the district.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll now open it to questions of the members. But before we do, I think it's only appropriate that we first offer Ms. Rose Ziberg an opportunity to comment, as she has been the most closest to this from the presentation that was made tonight. How many meetings? Looked like dozen of them. So let's go to you, if you'd be so willing, just to let us know from your vantage point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, we had a lot of meetings. And also, I want to thank, there was a lot of, I got a lot of phone calls and spent a lot of hours talking to a lot of people who have differing opinions about this program. And I took it all very seriously. I do have to say, I'm, I am dismayed a little bit with where, where this went, with what we had put together for ideas for programs. together for ideas for programs. Just off the top, because some of the stuff wasn't apparent from the printed material that we received. When you say that we are already reaching kids, what I look at, and again, that, thank you Assistant Super McDonald, I do really believe that it is our job as school committee members and as educators to make sure that each kid is getting what they need. So we do have data that shows we have kids across every school who are above grade level. So when we sat in our working group, we really did think, well, you know, we're missing them. Like, we keep saying, like, okay, having it one school, we just can see, we all agree, you know, it's just not working, like, if you build it, they will come. They didn't. They have not come to Linden. So you don't just then say, well, those kids don't exist. We need to give them the education that they deserve. So hearing, I'm interested in just finding out more, when you said that we already, actually are already doing that, the above grade. What I really had hoped to see from this was a revising of what is considered the AEAP program, to identify the kids who are above, who need it with, whether similar to what we talked about, the walk-to-read programs, there's enrichment clusters, there's compact in curriculum, there's a plethora of choices out there, to see that, and so that the AEAP program rather than be centralized in one building, because I think even moving the building, switching locations to make it another one, we still are going to have the same transportation issues, we're going to have a lot of the same issues, because I don't believe that all of, even if there's any school that would make it completely accessible or walkable. So we kind of didn't think of that as an option, and did think, you know, kids at their own program with a different approach. What does AEAP look like now? And it could be that it's a push-in model, or is it in their wind block, or is it in something that is different, but is getting them at their level, at that higher level? Because when I look at, you know, there's 30-something kids, I did look back at the January data, you know, 35 kids in fourth grade who are above grade level. We can't lose them. We can't lose them. I was also interested in data to see of those 35 kids who on standardized testing did this well. What are their grades? Because one of the concerns constantly brought up from parents has been that a child who does well on a standardized test doesn't always translate into a successful student in the classroom. There can be kids who are underperforming in the classroom because they're not being challenged enough. So I'd like to see data on that. I was also interested in some of the understanding that for this current group of children who are in the AEAP program, there are kids who did not meet the criteria, and I don't see the data on, we've got a lot of data about the test scores, but I don't see what the exit criteria was. There's a number of different things. Was it their attendance? Was it that they couldn't maintain their grades of, you know, A minus to A plus? So I'd like to see that, to sort of get more information before I could make any kind of a weigh-in on things. Those are all, you know, that's part of the criteria. One portion was the standardized testing, and the current, the current method is, you're correct, that it's no lower than grade level. So we actually only expect kids to be at grade level currently. I agree with the idea that if this truly is to be accelerated and enriched, okay, you need to be above grade level. I get that, but I think in a lot of ways, some of that first proposal, it's basically going backwards and saying, this is what we all agree we didn't want to have. And I talked to a lot of parents who were supportive of getting it out into different classrooms, reaching the kids at their levels, and as I said, there's lots of different models for it that you can look at. I know that there is movement on the, hopefully there's movement on the state side of actually defining what programs like this should be considered, what criteria that they look at, that there should be guidance, hopefully from the state at some point on this, because right now, it is odd because gifted is not even defined by our state. But there's supposed to be some movement on that. So again, so I have like some specific, just like questions about stuff, because where we said, I do understand the need to say, look, well, yeah, you should be gifted, but I don't understand why not then switching it to a model where it's in each school and just then, I've said before, like, oh, then we get to toss it back to you to figure out how to implement it, because I just can't imagine being one of the parents of one of those 35 kids who hears, you know, you're okay. That's where I am.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rose Seiberg. Superintendent, do you want to comment on?
Sure, absolutely, yes. So we do have students who score above grade level, absolutely yes, and those are the students that we will provide with extensions. So the curriculum that we have provides that opportunity within the same curriculum to go deeper into the mastery of standards above grade level. And we also have students who are, need interventions to make sure that they move to grade level and above grade level, but we started already that project. I don't want to mix the Honors Program with this, because it's not, the Honors Program is the district, what it's doing already, is piloting now. Sadly, we didn't have anybody from Linden School to volunteer to pilot that program, but we are working thanks to Dr. Dias, and yes, and also the entire team, Emily's team, they have been piloting with teachers who are looking deeper at the curriculum, looking at expansions, looking at students, because it should be happening in the classroom, differentiating learning, and also project-based, where students can start talking about work in a critical thinking way. So it is happening right now, and I'm very proud to say that.
All right, very good, thank you. Anybody else, or do we want to take some time to digest this? Let's go to Ms. Batafor, and then we'll go over to Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Rose Seiberg. Those are really, really great questions that you posed to the superintendent, and I think, I think it's questions that need answers really before it comes to us fully. I do want to say, though, when this originally came before us, and it's been before us numerous times for many, many years, it did come to us under a lens of equity, and hence why it sat with my subcommittee for so long, and I think that question is, still hasn't been answered. Is it a program that is equitable in the stages that it's in now and potentially the future, if we're keeping it open? You'd mentioned moving it into another school, and while it may not be 100% equitable, is it better than being in a school at the far end of the city? Is it doing a little bit more than where we're at now? So that is a question that I think needs to be answered. I think, you know, the data provided, I appreciate all the work that went into it, and thank you for sitting on this committee, because where we were a year ago, we didn't know where we were going with it. So I think I would like to see some more information to Ms. Rose Seiberg's questions as well, when it comes to what we're offering already in the classroom at this level, especially with the data that was showcased here, those that are meeting or exceeding the above, the standards that we've set forth. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batafor. Did you want anything, Sup?
So if you want to, for us to talk about it tonight, actually, my team is here to ready to talk about what is actually happening in the implementation of, in every single classroom, where it comes to the expansion, especially with the pilot of the Honors Program. So we can talk about it if you want.
I think we'll take that offline. Let's let this settle, I think between now and our next meeting, the members will be able to get some of that information. Mr. Gray, and then we'll go over to Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I looked at today's presentation tonight, and I agreed with some parts and I disagreed with others. You know, we can always agree to disagree. From what I've seen, because I've had three children go through the AEAP program, it's been neglected for years. A lot of times, it's understaffed, lack of training, lack of leadership. That's what brought us to what we have and what we're seeing now. Okay? And I think if we make a decision now, we're making a decision on a program that's been in decline and neglected and underfunded for years. It's not what it is, and it's not what some of us want to see. I'm, from my personal perspective, I'm from a subset of immigrants who flock to this specific type of program, the way it's structured. You know, I'm an outlier now, you know, maybe it's not accepted as much as it used to be, but for me, as an immigrant, for my wife, who's an immigrant, for my parents, my wife's parents, and grandparents, this is what we want, this works for us. You know, maybe it not, may not work for everybody else, for transportation and other issues, but when you're a poor immigrant and you want to get ahead, and you want your children to get ahead, this program is what you want. When I was a child, you know, and I lived probably about three miles from school, this is a crazy story. My parents, they're from the Caribbean, they didn't know any better. They bundled me up. I was like, like sixth, seventh grade, pushed me out the door, middle of winter. You know, buses weren't running, I had to walk. Didn't matter how far it was, it didn't occur to me that I couldn't, but this was the 70s we're talking about. I remember once or twice, some kind old gentleman would pull over and say, hey, kid, you need a lift? Because I'm going through snow and ice and I'm walking in traffic, as a child. I'd say, gee, mister, thanks. You know, it's a miracle I'm still alive, but I had to get to school no matter what. Not everybody can do that. Not everybody can walk two or three miles as a child with a full backpack in a blizzard to get to school. There are going to be transportation problems. We can't help everybody. We can try, but we can't help everybody. I don't really have a question, I'm just telling my story, so that people understand where my support for this program is coming from, because this is the kind of program my parents put me through, shoved me through, it was way of life, and I didn't know any better. And I look at some of these students here, and I think, that was me. And I'm going to vote, we're going to, I'm going to do whatever I can to keep this program, to push it forward, and to help those children and those families who are like me, who want this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bernard.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Gray, for sharing that too, because I think that's one of the pieces that we sometimes miss. Just a couple of things. One of the things that struck me is that we still have this con, they said that people are just informed about this from word of mouth, and it was my understanding back when we were going this out, that we were going to go and be offering notification to parents or whatever methods in, you know, whatever language we kind of, you know, as close as whatever language we understood. And so I'm kind of, I have a concern about that, that I'm still hearing about word of mouth, because that was kind of one of the issues that we had when we were in the subcommittee, is that you only got in if you knew about it. So, you know, was, did that, did those offers go out, and was it still kind of a, you know, why is that still kind of a concept, Chair, when we did go and have that, that note, those notifications were supposed to go out?
Want to stop there and let her answer?
Yeah.
Okay. Sup? One second. Okay, go right ahead.
I can clarify that. The emails and all the notifications went out, but not every parent reads everything. So from the working committee standpoint, we felt like if you weren't really tuned in, then you might not have known about it, just because not every parent is reading every email and every notice that comes home. Would you agree with that statement? But we did publicize it.
Okay, so, but do you mind if I ask a follow-up question? So, but we did go and see, did we go and we see people that then tuned in, because they did, we did go and reach them from that point. You know, it wasn't just, you know, I'm sure that there were some parents that went and said, that do go and read every email or do read every comment, you know, maybe we need to go and kind of see that data too, said, you know, did we have a percentage of people that said, hey, great, I'm going to apply for this, because this is an opportunity for my kid?
I think we had a lot, and one thing I will say is, the working group did not have access to all of the applicants, because that was confidential.
Okay.
But we have a tracker, actually, with every single application, every single email that we send, and it was translated in seven different languages. We all actually hire a coordinator for the AEAP to actually answer just questions to parents in three different languages, and if we needed an additional language, we actually outsourced that. We have Erica Brunyon, who worked full-time doing this, calling parents who apply, who had questions about the applications, sometimes they needed more support filling out the applications, and that was something that Erica did for the department. This is something that we don't do for all the programs that we have. This is something that we added differently, that was a coordinator, and we do have all the data and the files whenever you need it, and all the families that submitted applications.
You know, I'd love to go and see those numbers at some point, just because I think that, that kind of will go away on any future decisions. The two other things that kind of struck me is that, you know, well, let me just ask this one thing. What's the plan if, let's say we go and we decide that we're going to go and move this from Linden to, say, Ferryway? Not that we have room in Ferryway, but just as an example, but then the MEA pushes back and says, no, those teachers were hired for Linden, or, you know, if we, if we have a teacher that says, no, that would be hard for me to go and get from Linden to Ferryway, do we, do we have a plan that, being able to go and do that, if we go and we hit our numbers of students that then have an opportunity to get into this program, so that we're not going to go and say, well, we don't have the teaching resources? I don't want to go and see us cancel something because of a scarcity of a resource, such like education, teacher or parent.
Okay. So teachers are not hired for specific programs, for, specifically for this program. So the job description that we look, it doesn't have anything about AEAP, and teachers are assigned to schools, they apply to a specific school. So if we move the program, if there's a space and there's an opening for teachers to transfer to the school, we will talk with the MEA, but teachers are not hired for this program itself. They teach one class out of the caseload, and that would be training from teachers in the other school who would like to participate in this program.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Bernard. Anybody else? Otherwise, we're going to move on, we have a long agenda. Let's go to our student representative, go right ahead.
So to go back to Mr. Gray's point, I think it is really important to understand that we have a lot, we have a great range of diversity in this city, and as a woman of color with two parents who are immigrants, one thing I've always been taught is to constantly grab at any opportunity that is thrown at me. Anything I can foresee, anything that is within my reach, I will go for it. And this program sounds like a great accelerated program that I would have thrown myself into. I think the issue is accessibility. Why create a program that seems so great for kids and gives that, them that opportunity to dive into their education, but make it so difficult for them to have access to it? I understand that transportation is a huge issue, and it's already an issue when kids are trying to get to school for their normal routine. But I would like to know if there was a possibility of looking into having this program in all of our schools. And I'm very new to this program and the concept of it, but from the sound of it, if we only have the Linden School and we have kids transferred to the Linden School for this specific program, that puts a lot of strain on the adults, the student, and the teachers themselves with already the classes that they already have, the curriculum, they already have to talk through with the rest of their team, and the administration team as well, because that school is taking on a surplus of kids. So although the program doesn't have as many kids as we were hoping for to serve, when we do have more kids, that creates a strain on the school. So I would like to know if there could possibly proposal where this program is implemented in each school, and the training is open, opened up to all the teachers that want to do it and stay in the school that they have been teaching in, versus trying to create this program that goes into the, goes to a school, one school in the middle of Malden, because as we said before, that's a little step towards progress, but I don't think little is enough. I think us trying to grasp and be like, instead of Linden, let's do Ferryway or BB, because that's in the middle of Malden, that's just simply not enough. So what, what is the difficulty with the re- So what, what is the difficulty with the resources and the, the training in order to open us up to all the schools?
I really thank you for that question, because the goal is not to have a specific program in a specific school, is to have it in every single classroom, in every single school. And that is the alignment week curriculum that allows for extension. So we don't have to have students moving to different locations. Uh, yeah, my family, eight kids, right? It's hard to have one kid here and the other one someplace in another school. The goal is every single school, and thank you for doing that, because yes, our students, we have to think about our families. If they are already connected to one of the schools, why are we going to break that uh, relationship that have already within their own communities? We have, the district has to provide in every single classroom rigorous curriculum, making sure they have access to the best, uh, highly qualified, I would have to say, teachers, and also extensions. We do want every single student in every single school to have that opportunity. We don't believe in having one place as the hub that excludes the rest of the students. We want to make sure it happens in every single school. The model that we are looking, and we actually exploring more, is the high school, where you have the CP and also honors. Students can do that. One of the things that we are doing is the honors program, where students will be able to have in the transcript at the middle school level, have honors when they actually, in the third term, where you know, first term, things can happen, it's reality. Then we know that second term, they can pick up themselves, and in third term, we can look at the grades and say, hey, you know what, you're doing so well, that you can move into the honors program. And that would be a pathway when you go to high school. In order to avoid that, you had to sit, you know, in CP classes for a little while and then honors, that would be the pathway. And we want to make sure it happens in every single school. I do believe that, you know, we have to provide to all our families, immigrant, child, you hear my accent, from, from Guatemala, just for the record. And yes, we believe that every single student in Malden Public Schools should have access to that in their neighborhood schools. And we don't want to exclude it by calling it something. We have the model already at the, at the high school as the honors pathway, and that's what we want to do. A vertical and horizontal planning. And all our teachers should be teaching program, uh, program-based learning, and at the same time, using the curriculum that we have, because the history in the district is, everybody has their own curriculum, and therefore some students have access to high rigorous curriculum, and in other places, they don't. So I totally agree with you about that, and shouldn't be called a specific program. We are actually saying honors program in every single school. Thank you for your question.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Weldy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with a lot of what has been said tonight, and I think that a lot of people are saying similar things in very different ways. Um, and, and, you know, one of the things that I've been thinking about since the beginning of the meeting, um, and I, and Isaac mentioned this at public comment, but I, I'm particularly grateful for the public reversal, right? Because it showed that as a body, there was an opportunity to reflect and think, and minds can be changed. And that is, I think, what we want from people, to, to want more information, and to want to have more conversations. And, um, you know, I, I appreciate that we've had the time to do that. Um, because, you know, one of the things that I saw in this data tonight, and this is what, we've been, we've been talking about this for years, but it's what I think Dr. Chase flagged for us four, four years ago, um, which is that, you know, for me, I'm glad that we're not voting on this tonight. Um, it's, it's been up for a while, but I'm glad we're not voting tonight. Um, or maybe we, what, well, we'll see. Um, but I think the idea of it may not work for everyone, but works, is, is the reason that we were talking about this in the first place, right? The equity argument is the only reason that we were talking about this in the first place. To me, the actual issue is perception versus reality. It's a little less about equity, and it's a little more about perception versus reality. Because I think what we've been seeing tonight with the data, what we've been hearing, we know that there's a significant community in, in this building, right? There's, there's a subset of the building that has built a very strong community, um, and it is, it's, it's thriving, and it has been a victim of a broken system for quite some time. Uh, we know that there are accelerated learners everywhere. Uh, let, let, I mean, let's be real, that data was startling. I mean, we should, we should see higher numbers, um, coming from, and we, we've been talking about a subset of like a hundred kids out of sixty-six-hundred for the better part of a year and a half, not really focusing as much on the sixty-five-hundred or the kids who might be two to three to four grades below. Um, we don't spend as much time, I think, talking and debating and thinking about, about that. But we should recognize that there is something built here that is working and strong, and figure out how we can best support it, while also acknowledging that perception versus reality piece, that like, there is the exact same curriculum being used. And that might have been in place for quite a while. Um, the, the data is not showing us what we want it to be showing us. Why? And I think we're not really asking the why. We're talking a lot about the logistical things and the programmatic hurdles, and do we move it from one building to another for equity's sake? And, and I think there is an argument to be made for a lot of different things that have been said tonight. But at the same time, I think each of us, a couple of us have asked some questions that I am now also interested in the answers to, um, mostly because I think that's what I've been struggling with while listening to this debate, I think, for, for quite a while, is that idea of perception versus reality. And if the perception doesn't match the reality, what are we doing to sort of help strengthen that reality? Um, and so I appreciate the extensive amount of work that was put into this from Superintendent, from Ms. Rose Zeiberg, from the whole team. Um, I appreciate the vantage points and experiences that we've heard tonight, too. Um, but that's, that's the question that I, I think I'm left wrestling with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weldy. Okay, anybody else? Because we have some more on the agenda. All right, Mr. Gray, you're gonna get the last call, and then we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Uh, everybody, uh, you have the information, please review it, as at some point, we will be taking a look at this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be real quick. Um, Mr. Weldy did a wonderful job of co-opting some of my message. He, I think he's kind of reading some of my mind. I just want to make it clear to everybody here and everybody out there, um, two points. Number one, I'm really enjoying this, um, meeting of philosophies and ideas. And so everybody knows, we're, we're not monolithic, we have different ideas, we have different personalities, we have different backgrounds. Just so everybody know, there's, there's nothing harsh. I'm really enjoying this. And we can talk, we can discuss, and there's, there's no animosity, we just have different opinions. Um, this, my second and last point is if we do move forward and keep this AEAE program, I'm volunteering myself to be a spokesman. I don't know if that's within the rules, but I will do whatever I can to promote the heck out of it, should we keep and maintain this program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Uh, I misspoke, we're gonna go over to Ms. Rose Zeiberg.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, very briefly, I just wanted to raise, I do have a concern if a program like this were, um, to discontinue, that I already know that it could create an enrollment issue. I know of a couple of parents who have actually switched into private school options when they, um, felt that this was not going to be in place. Um, one was including, there was a, a, uh, different things had happened, and somebody's, their even, their, um, high school choice switched because of things like this that they felt should have been in place. And just putting that there, that we're always looking at enrollment, that I don't know that would be huge, but it is a concern that has been presented to me. So I just wanted to relay that.
Thank you. Miss Batafora, did you want to add anything?
Do we want to take this up now, because it's under motions and resolutions?
No, I think, well, if there be no objection, uh, from the committee, I think we hold this?
Well, I was gonna make a motion to table.
Okay. Uh, let me, just before you do, Ms. Batafora, I'd like to add something from the chair. Uh, I, I just want to say, from my vantage point, we came together as a body last year to really get a good look at what this program is doing for the Linden and for the Malden Public Schools. And from what I saw this evening, we do have to contend with the data that was produced tonight, because I had much higher expectations on what was going to be produced this evening. And so Superintendent, from where I sit, that has to be addressed. Because this committee spent a lot of time last year revamping where we were and trying to take it from where it was to get a real good look at what it means. And from what was shown tonight, it was not what I thought it was going to show. Uh, the other thing I would say is, you know, about the idea of expanding it, we just got done prior to this presentation talking about the constraints that we are under. So we have to keep that in mind. We can barely handle what we have now at the Linden. So to expand this, uh, when, you know, we're capped at what we have for resources, I'm not quite sure how we would be able to, to do that. We already have a person who is doing an exceptional job just coordinating this program. So that is a resource right now that is being tied up for this one program at this one school. So for me, that all has to be figured out in where we're going. If we were taking away this program and doing nothing behind it, yeah, that would be a concern. But I think we have to account for what the Superintendent has been working on with her team and is prepared to implement, which is having a program across all the schools in grades, uh, five to eight. An honest program. So our students won't be left with no options. They're gonna, they're gonna go from this, if we were so to choose, into this new rigorous program. So those are some of the thoughts I had on this, that, you know, I'm, that for me are gonna weigh heavily on, you know, where I go with this. But, uh, that's what I would ask the members to do, is, uh, you know, really take a close look at, at where we've been, where we are, and really where we should be going. Um, and I expect, uh, based on Ms. Batafora's motion, we will have the time to do that. So let me segue over to her, and let's see what she has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm only, just because I'm the sponsor of this, under motions and res- resolutions, excuse me, that I would, um, like to table this discussion until the March, um, meeting, and have the Superintendent provide additional, um, answers to the questions that were asked tonight, additional data that we're looking for, to make sure that, uh, come our next meeting, we're able to thoughtfully, um, make, um, a decision on where this program goes.
Seconded by Mr. Weldy. Any discussion? Alders in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. All right, let's stay with Ms. Batafora, under policy and procedures. And what say you?
So this is just an update on our last policy and procedure subcommittee meeting. So at our, um, December twenty-twenty-two, um, school committee meeting, Mr. Weldy presented a, um, looking to update a policy that we have in regards to, um, student transfers in district, in, from school to school. And, uh, right now, we have, as the Superintendent presented, you can see a waitlist of students, um, that may want to go to their neighborhood school, but those classes are, are full. So they're placed on a waitlist. Um, there then comes, um, maybe possible issues, extenuating circumstances in which we would, um, approve a, a transfer, um, of a student that may be, you know, fifth or sixth on the waitlist and not at the top. Um, so the policy and procedure, a subcommittee came together on January nineteenth, um, discussed what those possible circumstances would be, and, uh, agreed to table, um, the discussion while we worked on creating a policy that, um, allowed the Superintendent to make, um, those decisions based on, um, whether maybe there was a safety issue with a student needing to move schools because of a conflict, or, um, maybe, uh, a potential unfortunate death in a family, and the student had to go maybe live with a caregiver that lived on the other side of Malden, and just to make, um, their life easier. So we are tabled right now, we are working on this policy, and we will be meeting again, and we'll have something for the March meeting.
Very good. Any questions of the members? Hearing none, let's move to Mr. McCarthy, Superintendent Evaluation.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll keep this very, very brief, I'll wait till the, uh, present, yeah, it's all Wait till the presentation is up. If you could just go to standard one, I'm just gonna go right to the standards.
And before we do that, this will all be online?
All of it's gonna be uploaded onto, onto the, um, online.
But tonight, we're just doing this?
Yeah, I'm gonna go right through, I'm gonna go right through, uh, standards one through four.
Yep.
See the, um, some of the changes that were there, and then go to the three Superintendent goals, and then say what the overall, um, rating was.
Okay.
Um, so based on standard one, which is instructional leadership, um, those were the tallies for, um, some minor changes within the evaluation for the Superintendent, um, for areas A, B, C, D, and E. Next slide. Um, that was the composite rating for, for standard one, based, based on the data and the info, um, that was presented in the, in the subcommittee meeting, um, prior to, prior to it coming here tonight.
Okay.
Uh, that's the tally for standard two, management and operations, um, very minor changes, um, to the data, um, when we looked at it again. Next slide. Uh, this was the, um, composite ratings for, for standard two, um, based on the, on the Standard three, um, that's the tally for every single area. Um, yep. That was the composite rating, um, for, for standard three, which was a proficient rating. Um, next slide. Standard four, that was the tally breakdown, um, for professional culture, based on every single area. Next slide. And it came out as a, um, a proficient rating, based on the, the data and the info, um, from all evaluations.
Okay.
Um, and then this is the final slide of, of the presentation, uh, based on all of standards one, two, three, and four, that was a, uh, the favorability towards, um, a proficient overall rating for, um, the evaluation is there, based on the totals of, of the number at the, at the bottom of, of the slide, um, for standards one through four.
Okay. All right, very good, there you have it. Any questions, queries, qualms, concerns? What do we do, take a vote to approve?
Yeah, it's under motions and resolutions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so if you look at your agenda, everyone, uh, it's the next item anyway, so we might as well segue into whether or not we're prepared to accept. Any motions? Do you want to make it, Mr. McCarthy, I presume?
Uh, yeah, I'll, um...
Motion to a...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the Superintendent Evaluation as presented.
All right. Is there a second for discussion? Seconded by Ms. Rose Zeiberg. All right, any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, it's gonna be a roll call, or?
Yes, it'll be a roll call, yes. All right, let's have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Drumming?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Zeiberg?
Yes.
May I question?
Yes, that carries unanimously. All right, uh, now, the school calendar. Mr. Weldy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I...
I, the superintendent mentioned this in her reports, we all should have a copy of the 2324 calendar. I really wanna give a word of credit and appreciation to the superintendent, her team, the MEA, for meeting and getting this done really quickly. We don't usually see this until March or April, and I know some folks have been asking, and so the fact that we were able to get this so quickly, and that we were able to make some, I think substantive changes that are beneficial to all of us, is much appreciated. So I guess I would make a motion to approve for, to open it up for discussion.
All right, motion by Mr. Weldy, seconded by Mr. Drummy. All right, let's take some questions. Any questions of the members? You've all had a chance to review it. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Next up, donation from Genitatio Family Fund. Mr. Weldy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a motion to approve, as it is a financial donation from a private citizen, that it's our duty to just approve that donation being made.
Motion by Mr. Weldy, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any questions? Do you wanna explain a little bit about it, or?
No, somebody's donating $500 to the.
Okay, $500.
Yeah, they're giving us money.
Quit while you're ahead? All right. All right, all those in favor, say, all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. All right, everybody. Finally, over to Mr. Bernard, who wants to discuss a resolution to make lunch and breakfast meals free permanently for students. Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we saw earlier today, it's one of the things that Senator Lewis, and to be honest, I didn't have the bill numbers until I actually got a little newsletter in the, in my mail today. There's actually some legislation to go and make our lunch programs that we currently, you know, luckily, we've gotten that funded by, by the state for this next year, but they wanna go in, and there's some legislation in the state and the House to go and make that permanent. I think with, not only is it really good for our students to go and have a meal that they don't have to go and necessarily worry about, but I also think in terms of all of our budgetary concerns, that anything that we can do to kind of offset those costs makes sense to me, and I would hope that would make sense to the rest of this, this committee. And I'd just like, one other thing that I wanna go and point out, I had a quick conversation with our legislative body, and I think that, for the most part, they're, they're all sponsoring it currently, and I think we can just make a friendly recommendation or endorsement of this, with a thank you to them of going and putting this forward, and, and supporting it and endorsing it. I'd like to go and see us go and kind of go and do that, put our, our stamp of approval on that.
So motion by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Weldy for purposes of discussion. So before we take a few questions, you would work with our clerk to draft and send?
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's see, Ms. Batafora.
Yeah, thank you. That was kinda, I, I am not comfortable with supporting a resolution when I don't have anything in front of me to vote to support. Usually, we get a resolve that says, you know, whereas the Malden School Committee supports, you know, free lunch for all students and where, so I would have liked to have seen a proper resolution put before us. And I'm not saying, you know, that I wouldn't, I'm, I'm totally in support of it. Me and Mr. Weldy worked extensively with Ms. Mertz and our legislators in regards to the community eligibility program to get free lunch and breakfast in the classroom. So that is something that is like near and dear, like kids learn when they have full bellies, so I wanna see it happen, but I'd just like to see a proper resolve in front of us.
Could we hold it over, Mr. Bernard?
You know, I'm happy with, I understand that too, because I, again, I didn't have the legislative numbers in front of me by cutoff time. I got them late in the day on Friday, and I was coming out of, out of a thing, I'm like, all right, I can't go and just go and send this out to the group. So I'm, I'm happy to go and kind of table this to the next time, and I'll go and I'll work, I'm happy to work with the clerk and.
Good.
More than happy to work with you.
And appropriate language.
Okay. All right, very good. Anybody else? Mr. Gray, and then Mr. Weldy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only because I really don't know and don't understand, I just wanna toss a quick question. Is there a cost to this, or is this free?
Is there, is there, is there a cost to this? I mean, I think in terms of the, the Malden school budget, is that, you know, we will go and be able to go and offset the cost of our lunches, and, and right now, we go and receive that anyway from, from the state going and extending that program this year. Is there gonna be a cost to the taxpayer? Sure, because that's how we go and we pay for all of our things. You know, it's how we go and we pay for our electronics and our teachers and, and these lunch programs. So yes, there will be a, a cost to the taxpayer in the long term. You know, it does need to go and go through the legislative process, it will need to go in through the budgetary process at the state level. Hopefully, there will be some, some federal monies coming through. I know that there's a couple of our state reps that are, I should say are, are, people in the House of Representatives that are looking to go and make this happen because they believe that should be a national program. But that being that, the way that I see it right now is that we ask them to go and support and, and to shepherd this through, and if it gets through, and that's one thing that we don't have to go and worry about next year when we're doing our budget and saying, hey, we gotta go and take away those free lunches that, you know, to be honest, that, I know Ms. Batafora and Mr. Weldy really did work very hard on going and doing, I think we honor them by going and making sure that, that, you know, we do everything we can, and for our students to go and make sure that they're getting that nutrition they need.
Thank you.
So maybe, Mr. Bernard, for next meeting too, you could let Mr. Gray and the committee know how you think the state will finance it. You know, if you could ask them what they're thinking. Is it all federal? Is it, you know, just, 'cause I haven't heard that either, how they were gonna, going to finance. I don't know if you have, but it would be interesting to know on whether or not they would, you know, require the districts to, you know, put up as part of the overall financing package. Let's see if we can find out a little bit more, if you'd be so willing.
I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Mr. Weldy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, I, I, even though we're, I guess, we're, even though we're not planning on voting on it tonight, I, I would have been happy to support this, and I wanna thank you, Mr. Bernard, for bringing this up, particularly because I think we spend a lot of time making sure that we in Malden are eligible for that CEP, and that that's something that, that won't go away. But I think having project bred here, and I know a lot of us were at that, the food truck event over the summer, and highlighting some of the work that we've done in Malden, I think oftentimes, we, we forget, because we do have to focus on what we're doing, that, you know, we can and should take a position of promoting this across the state, that there are great things happening here that everyone should have access to. So I appreciate you bringing this up, and I look forward to supporting it next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to table.
Yeah.
Mr. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Drummy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the ayes have it, that's tabled until next meeting. Let's go to personal privilege before we entertain a motion to go into executive session. Mindful that it is 20 of nine. Let's go to Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few quick things. This season, this year, in Ward Six, we're getting ready for Maplewood Festival. We're targeting May 20th. Come on down, bring your pocketbooks, bring your joy, we're gonna have fun in Maplewood Square, May 20th. July 4th, on July 4th, we're gonna have a great time in Traffton Park. And the last big thing we're looking at right now is Halloween in Traffton, October 29th. Come on down, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gray, I think. Let's go to Mr. Bernard.
Just a couple of announcements from, from the Salem Wood. Tomorrow, February 7th, there's a Title I Family Event going from 8:15 in the morning to 9:15 in their K-4 Cafe. Wednesday, on February 8th, is the 100th Day of School, and the staff and the students are welcome to dress like the 80s, when I was a little baby. I knew you would, Mike. This Friday, there's an early release at 11:00 a.m., parents note it. And then on February 15th, Title I Math Night is at 6:00 p.m. for all K-8 families in the K-4 Cafe and Library. She's got a lot of things on here, so I apologize. On February 16th, there's a grade five and six movie night in the auditorium. They are looking for volunteers, so please reach out to Sue Noonan. And then the February break, that's all I've got.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Bernard. Ms. Rose Ziberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Why don't you just quickly thank Senator Lewis and the reps who are here, as well as my daughter Sarah, for providing a lot of information with Chapter 70. Just a heads up, I'm a part of Zonta here in Malden, Women Making a Difference is coming up in the month of March, so please be on the lookout for that, event where we honor different organizations and women who are making a difference in our community. And special shout out to Principal Lawrence. I was fortunate enough to be at the ELC and witnessed a fun that was going on at the party, and was there when the electricity went out in that part of town. And she flawlessly was calm, collected, everybody got out fine, and shout out also to Mike and Paul, who take care of the maintenance for the building, who also were, you know, there helping everybody safely evacuate the building when, unfortunately, it ended a little early. That's it.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Weldy. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss Ms. Batafora? Go ahead, Ms. Batafora. I was looking, I thought he had his light on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard that that's when the real party began, that's when we saw Ms. Lawrence's dance moves, is once the power went, went out, and the glow sticks came out, and, no, but in all seriousness, huge thank you to our maintenance and facilities crew. I think this was a really challenging weekend, and, and I know that the mayor and his staff were fielding probably a ridiculous amount of things over the weekend that, that I think we as a city handled admirably, but, you know, my, my school building had a burst pipe, frozen sprinkler, there were folks there working in zero degree weather all Saturday, so the fact that we were able to fend off issues and, and get through all of that successfully, I think is a real testament to our maintenance and facilities crew, so thank you for that. And then the only other thing I'd really love to mention is that it is National School Counseling Week, so a happy National School Counseling Week to our school counselors and social workers. We are, we are very lucky, I think, in Malden to have the best director of counseling in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And if you have not gotten a chance to read Erin Craven's email yet, you should, take a look, and what I was going to do was, she linked this amazing document, basically what, what Malden Public Schools counselors do every day, and I was gonna read it, but then the mayor made a comment about how we don't have 30 minutes for me to read through that list. It's amazing, and if we can, I would love to see us take that, some of that information, and put it up on our Malden Public Schools social media, because I think it's something that people should see. I think anybody who walks into a school building at this point is a first responder for emotional dysregulation, so let's think about everything that goes on with our school counselors and social workers, and the amount of heart and fortitude and, and tolerance and, and love that they bring into what they do on a daily basis. So I, I appreciated reading this list again, and I hope you all get a chance to read it too, and I just wanna say thank you very much for everything that you all do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, I'll be really quick. Mr. Gray, stop talking to my kids, 'cause they've already picked out their Halloween costumes. So coming up at BB, we have the caregiver conferences, February 8th, 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. Did I have that time right? Okay, thank you. We also have Title I Caregiver Breakfast Workshop on February 13th at 8:30 a.m., and the BBPTO meeting coming up on February 15th at 6:30 p.m. District-wide, I think Mr. Bernard might have mentioned this, I'm gonna say it again 'cause I have it in front of me, Title I Math Night on February 8th, 6:00 to 7:30 at the Salem Wood K-4 Cafeteria and Library. Early dismissal coming up on the 10th. Stop the Stigma Day is coming up on March 8th, so keep your eyes and ears open for that. And I just wanna say a huge thank you to Ms. Macklin, actually, who has kept me engaged every single day, she's been posting about Black History Month right now, with a different person to learn about, and I've learned so much in just a matter of a couple days. Today, my, one of my favorite people, Bob Marley, was his birth, I think it was today that you shared. So thank you, just, just acknowledging Black History Month, but we don't need just one month, we acknowledge it every single month, so thank you.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Batafora. Just one note from the chair, I can now understand why Ms. Batafora spent so much time on the food service contract, because I had the pleasure today of filling in at the Salem Wood School with Tony Mertz, and I was not only impressed with the offerings, but just the exuberance of the staff, even between shifts, when you think they might have, you know, sat down and took a few minutes, they were prepping for the next shift. And it was just a, it was beyond what I thought it would be, and it was nice to hear from the students and the staff just how much they thought that we were heading in the right direction with this new vendor. The same can be said from the Malden Youth Civics Council at the high school, they too believe that we're on the right track. So, you know, compliments to you, because, you know, we're in the throes of it, you don't really understand why, but then when you're, you go see it, you do.
No, compliments to the committee and all the students that spoke up and said, hey, this is what we want, because now they're seeing, you know, that we can provide, and, and I love, you know, I log on to social media and I see amazing meals that they're putting out, and, not just amazing, they're real and they're healthy.
Right.
And they're, they're what kids want, like, they're into like the bento boxes, and they, you know, they don't want just a plastic tray with, you know, food put in front of them, they wanna be dined, and, and they're getting that now, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know how to take it when many of the students said, I have a future, so. All right, everyone, so we'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziberg?
Yes.
Mayor Krasinski?
Yes. School committee will now be in executive session.
All right, school committee is back from executive session. We'll entertain any motions. Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Shear. I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the SEIU Local 888 Malden School Administrative Assistance effective July 1, 2022 until June 30, 2025.
Seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, recall the roll.
Mr. Drumming?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Waldy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Yes, that carries unanimously. We'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Everybody at once. Can you do that? A motion by everybody? Uh, tell you what, Shirley, I'll let you pick. We'll see who your favorites are next meeting. We'll see who you had adjourn, all right?